Okay, welcome to the City of Cupertino.
Recording in progress.
Today is Tuesday, July 25th, 2023 at 5:00 PM. An opening meeting for a special city council meeting. If you are able, please stand for the flag salute. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Chow.
Here.
Councilmember Fruin.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mohan.
Here.
Mayor Wei.
Here. Thank you. We are going into our study session, which is item number one on the agenda. Study session and staff presentation on the sixth cycle Housing Element Update. May I have the staff presentation, please?
Sure, Mayor Wei. We have Luke Connolly, Assistant Director to CDD, and also Pugh Goj, Planning Manager, to provide an overview of where we are on the housing element.
Okay. Thank you, City Manager Wu. Good evening, or I guess good afternoon, Mayor Wei and council members. Luke Connolly, the Assistant Director of Community Development. As City Manager said, I also have Pugh Goj, Planning Manager, here as well. And I think tonight, the goal with this is on the sixth cycle Housing Element Update, which we've had a lot of outreach, a lot of meetings on in the prior year. It's been a while, and to give sort of a comprehensive update of where we are, what we've done, what the housing element is. So for the agenda tonight, we're going to be going through really some background. And I think for people who have followed this project closely, some of this may seem very familiar to them. I think for others who are new to the process, it hopefully is going to be informative. And if anything, it should hopefully get people back into that, the process that we were meeting regularly on and familiarize herself with where we left off. So I'm going to really go through the background to start off the presentation, and then get into sort of what we know, what we've learned since we last met. The last time we really had some major lengthy meetings on this was the end of last August, so almost 11 months, when this was before the city council, when we had the initial site selection. So we're going to go through those two parts, and then plan to have a break. So that will be about Slide 17, I believe, which then after that break, where there should be some discussion to talk about where we're at so far, we can then get up to what we're calling our Updated Site Strategy. As I said, when, last August, the city council, after a lengthy process with the Planning and Housing Commission, made a site selection. And we've now had feedback from Housing and Community Development Department, I think as all of you know. And we need to now revisit, now that we have those comments, how we're going to deal with getting that site strategy compliant with what HCD is requesting of us. We also want to have some feedback on policies, which is something, policies and programs. We really never got into a lot at any of the prior meetings on this project, and it's a key area of the Housing Element Update, so we want to get on that. I guess what I should say as well, between the site strategy discussion and policies, we also plan to have another break, so we can have the comments focused around each area that we're discussing. And we will then wrap up with the policy discussion, and also have a timeline and discuss the next steps on the project. Okay, so very basic. What is a housing element? Housing element is one of the eight required elements of the city's general plan. So if you think of the city's general plan as the blueprint to development, which is how it's often thought of, the housing element is essentially that for housing. It's really got all the data related to housing, households, housing types, demographic information on the city. It identifies your housing sites for each planning cycle. So it really provides a lot of information on guidance with where a city is at and where it needs to be for its planning period. One of the main differences of the housing element compared to the rest of the general plan elements is that it needs to be updated every eight years per state law. So while your general plan is typically a really long-range document, for instance, the City of Cupertino is covering the period of 2015 to 2040, the housing element is much more focused. It is an eight-year plan. It's the most updated piece of the city's general plan. And really, the purpose, like I said, is to look at being able to create and accommodate the housing sites that are needed within that planning period. These are assigned by the Housing and Community Development Department through A-BAG, and the focus is on housing, but also for affordable housing, and meeting the needs of your community and the surrounding region as well. So that's, you know, really what your housing element is in a nutshell, and we could go to the next slide now. So what does state law require as part of this every eight-year update process? Public participation, a lot of it. That's always been there. It's becoming more and more important with each cycle. A needs analysis, which is essentially identifying where's your community at, what types of housing are most needed, and for what groups of people. Also, you have a review of your prior housing elements, policies, and programs. So that would be the fifth cycle in this case. Frequently, you build on what you had before. So you need to look at what worked, what were those policies and programs, what's still relevant, which ones need to be modified, which of those no longer need to be continued. So that's generally your starting point for that discussion. And based on that, you're then going to develop new goals, policies, and programs to address your current needs, or really the needs for the next eight-year period in the housing cycle. And probably the key piece for a lot of cities, and what we spent a lot of time on on this so far, is the housing sites inventory. This is tied into your regional housing needs allocation number, and it's essentially looking at and identifying sites and enabling housing to be built on those sites within the planning period. Who reviews and certifies the compliance with state law? Well, that's the State Housing and Community Development Department. So while this is a city document, it's also very much a document covered by state law and needs to be certified by HCD. So in a sense, you have to think twofold. The city approves this, but HCD also needs to certify the document. We talk a lot about the housing element, but there's also other pieces, given the significance of the project, that are going, that will require changes. Other sections of the general plan that were related to land use, transportation, specific plans, all of these may need to be amended as part of the housing element because we're adding a significant amount of housing in an eight-year period. 4,588 units is our RENA number that was identified, and being able to accommodate that, we need to have the land use changes in place for consistency's sake. State law requirements as well. We have to update the health and safety element as part of the general plan update, and some of these relate to things that are, say, climate change-related with health and safety, fire hazards, evacuation plans, for instance. Zoning amendments are a key piece of this and is very much part of the project that we're looking at doing concurrently with the housing element update. And there may be other areas, such as developing objective design standards, which is something we already are under contract to do and will be working on, hopefully concurrently with this project, as we're trying to get that kick-started again as well. Okay, so some further background. The sixth cycle Housing Element Update covers the period of 2023 to 2031, which I've said. The certification deadline, as I think everybody in this room knows, was January 31 of this year, so we're late. Many other jurisdictions are in a similar situation to Cupertino on this. There are 11 jurisdictions in Santa Clara County, for instance, of the 15 cities that are also non-compliant. Only four are certified at this point. In the A-BAG region, which is a nine-county area with 109 cities, Cupertino is part of that, 56 of the jurisdictions are also not compliant. So we're late on this. It's something we need to get done, and we have less time to do it in, but other cities are in a similar situation to the city. Also, something to note is Southern California Association of Governments, which is by far the largest in the state, represents about 20 million people. They started this process a little over a year before us. You still have one-third of those jurisdictions, it's 190-some cities, that are still out of compliance. So again, I think part of that is, this has been a very complex cycle. There have been a lot of new laws passed, new legislation, and I think a lot of cities are sort of finding their way on this. So just wanted to give you some context with where we're at. Some additional context here is really the numbers from A-BAG, and if they're slightly small, just wanted to give a reminder that of the nine-county A-BAG area, there's a RENA of over 440,000. So Cupertino's got a little over 1% of the A-BAG RENA, and we have a little under 1% of the population of that 7.1 million nine-county area. So we're pretty representative in that sense, probably have slightly more RENA than some other cities do, but just to get some context with where we stand within the Bay Area region. This is breakdown for Santa Clara County, and I just thought it's something you may have seen a while ago, but it's interesting to note Cupertino's RENA went up significantly over four times from the previous cycle. But if you look at other cities, let's take Gilroy and Palo Alto have about the same population. Palo Alto is slightly larger at this point. Palo Alto's RENA, though, is over 6,000. So they have about a third more housing units than Cupertino does to meet. Mountain View, which is about 20,000 to 25,000, larger in population, has well over twice the RENA at 11,135. So what this is really getting at is that you have higher housing allocations going to cities that really are job-rich and high in opportunity, like Cupertino, but not just Cupertino. I think similarly on here, you have Gilroy, which is almost exactly the same population as Cupertino at this point, has a much lower RENA in the South County at 1,773. And they're the only city in the county whose highest proportion of housing is in very low income. So just wanted to show this, that it does vary. I think the goal with this housing element to keep in mind is high-opportunity areas that have jobs, good schools, and Cupertino falls into that category. This is Cupertino's RENA broken down by income group. This slide probably looks very familiar. Of the 4,588 units, we have a little under 43% are market rate or above moderate income. 56.5% or 57% are in the lower, very low, low and moderate income categories. So that gives you an idea of what we're trying to do by income type when we look at RENA. So it's not just the total number of housing, it's also by income group. Wanted to put this into on the fifth cycle versus the sixth cycle. You can see how the total number changed. We went from 1,064 in the previous housing cycle to 4,588. Another big thing to note was in the previous cycle, there were only five housing sites identified, whereas last August, we had over 50 properties on the sites inventory. The unit capacity that was identified for those five sites was 1,400, and in terms of approval, the city did very well, easily accommodating its RENA at over 3,370 units that were approved. Building permits issued, though, was another story, where only 546 building permits were issued. So to a large degree, this is telling you the city did its job in terms of approving housing. It, you know, well exceeded its RENA, but the city doesn't also control housing production. So those are two very different things, I think, as we go through this. There's often the sort of mistaken issue that these are housing units that are actually proposed to get built. We're trying to accommodate housing units when we talk about updating the housing element. Just of note, too, four of the five projects did utilize the state density bonus law under the last cycle. Sixth cycle versus fifth cycle. Again, I think one of the comments, I believe it was Councilmember Moore last August, had said, why is this cycle so much more difficult than the previous housing cycle? And I think that's a sentiment that pretty much everybody's worked on this feels. I know I have. It's been much more complicated, trying to deal with a lot of the legislation and regulations that have come out, but also that we have a much higher RENA, and we have few-to-no undeveloped sites, is what's commonly happening in the Bay Area, and certainly that's Cupertino's case. There's much more reliance on redevelopment to meet RENA versus previous housing cycles. And as I said, we've had new legislation that has added more requirements in terms of developing policies and programs, has increased accountability to actually produce housing. Site selection restrictions and criteria have made it a little more difficult to select properties that are going to appear viable and have realistic development capacity. There's increasingly less discretion where housing development is concerned. Housing has moved more towards a ministerial process and moving away from a discretionary one. There's certainly far more reporting. Our annual reports that go to the state on April 1st every year are pretty much tracking now not only your housing sites, but have they been entitled through, say, a planning commission or city council meeting? Have building permits been issued? Have certificates of occupancy been issued? And have the housing been built? So this is essentially something that's tracking where are you at in the process. We've also had, if you go back, thank you, affirmatively furthering fair housing, or AFFH requirements, which we'll be talking about, and far more outreach and inclusion requirements. So what this has really amounted to is that your housing element has become less like a document that you put on a shelf or just have on your website and something that's more like a contract, where you're entering into an agreement, it's tracked, and you have to be complying and showing progress as you go through. We can move on to the next slide now. So just wanted to throw this in as well. We're not at this point. This is a question that frequently comes up, is what can happen if you do not have a certified housing element? Right now, we don't. But if this were to go on for an extended period of time, what you get is you have a loss of local land use control. You're subject to things like the builder's remedy, which has been getting a lot of press lately. You certainly are open to lawsuits and attorney fees, ineligibility for a lot of grant funding through the state, financial penalties, court-issued fines, streamlined ministerial approval of projects, even more so than what's out there for other cities that are compliant, and even things such as court receivership, where you'd have an agent appointed to bring the city's housing element into compliance. So these are all things that over time can increasingly happen to cities that are non-compliant. What is affirmatively furthering fair housing? I know we have talked about this term quite a bit last year. This comes out of Assembly Bill 686, which was adopted in 2018. Defines AFFH as taking meaningful actions in addition to combating discrimination that overcome patterns of segregation and foster inclusive communities free from barriers that restrict access to opportunity based on protected characteristics. This has become a key component of the outreach in the sixth cycle, and we had three community meetings that very much focused on AFFH requirements that were held last May through September. They were interactive meetings that were very well-attended. AFFH goals really are to address disparities in housing needs and access to opportunities. And Cupertino is uniformly viewed by state agencies as a high-opportunity area. So one of the goals here is to replace segregated living patterns with integrated and balanced living communities, to transform racially and ethnically concentrated areas of poverty into areas of opportunity, and to foster and maintain compliance with civil rights and fair housing laws. As I'd said, is all of the City of Cupertino is designated as a highest resource area. So this is atypical, say, cities like San Jose that neighbor us. You find a range of opportunity areas. The west side would be similar to Cupertino and seen as a highest opportunity area. East side would be seen as a median or lower opportunity area. So in a sense, Cupertino has this uniform designation citywide, which means really any of our housing sites are in a highest opportunity area. So by promoting affordable housing citywide, you are essentially directly addressing AFFH issues in doing that. And also, the city does have a high RENA and must look to accommodate persons who do not currently reside here. There's more of a regional perspective for the City of Cupertino, where you're looking at the city within the context, say, of the larger county. What has happened so far? So just for, a lot of you have been through a lot of the meetings we've had. There have been, in total, I think, going back to 2021, over 30 different public meetings on the Housing Element Update. Those started in 2021. We had a consultant selection in September 2021. Then that was following multiple RFPs by the city to get a consultant onboard. I think one of the issues we may have talked about is that with Southern California being so backlog, getting a consultant and getting started on this project was not as easy as it would have been in prior housing cycles. I'd mentioned the AFFH meetings we had in May, July, and September 22. We featured panelists that were representing different groups that would typically be considered special needs groups, which gave them an opportunity to provide direct experience and insights into this process, to include their comments, and hopefully develop policies and programs that would address AFFH directly. As I said, we selected the consultant in September 21. The consultant was with us just a little over a year. In October 22, we released the consultant. The next month, we were directed by the city council to proceed with the draft we had and get that prepared and off to HCD, which was done on February 4th of this year. We had a new consultant approved the following month in March, a notice of preparation for the EIR for the project, which covers the housing element and the rezoning. That was sent to the state's clearinghouse in April. We also had a scoping meeting in this room on April 18th, and our comments were received back from HCD on the original draft on May 4th at the end of their 90-day review period. What else has happened? We have had joint study sessions involving the Housing Commission, Planning Commission, and City Council, going back to April and May of 21. Those were the earliest meetings on this. There have also, in the time period between September and August 22, there were eight city council meetings, which focused on site selection as well as community engagement and outreach. There were housing commission meetings held in December and June and July, the last two being joint meetings with the Planning Commission. Planning Commission had six meetings focused really solely on site selection, which concluded, I believe, on July 5th of last year. And there was also a community engagement plan strategic advisory committee, which was formed by the city council in March of last year. That committee met on March, between March and October 2022, eight times, and it was focused again on developing a community engagement plan and fostering opportunities for outreach. And I believe that is going to wrap up our first, yeah. So in terms of the background, if this would be a good place to take a break, we could do that. I would also be happy to continue, but this may be the opportunity to have some discussion at this time.
Thank you, Luke. So I'm going to bring back to the council for questions now. The council has any questions for Luke and for our staff? Please reiterate before I go to public comment.
Point of order, Mayor Wei. This will be a recess before we complete the entire presentation.
That's right. This is just this part of the council question. Shall we continue, or shall we say question later? Shall we do questions now? My counsel preference?
I think we could maybe benefit from some clarity as to exactly what Luke and Pugh would like from us today.
Mostly just if there were any general questions on the background, the process, what the housing element is about, requirements. I think this was sort of was the most basic component, just covering what's happened. But again, I think we, one thing to emphasize, there has been a lot of work put into this process to date, but if there really are no direct questions, we could certainly move into recapping the sites discussion and updating the direction we're looking to receive some input on tonight.
So I present to have questions. Background is very clear to me, and we've gone through this, you know, extensively. So do we have any questions from the council? If not, Councilmember Moore, please.
Thank you for the first portion of this presentation, Luke. I have one question, looking at this slide that we have up. So we have the very low income and low-income percentages, but within our city's BMR program, we have a 15% inclusionary requirement, but the state is asking us to provide a higher percentage. So it's my understanding that in order to actually have the percentages met, we actually need to have a lot more above moderate income be built, because a project's only allowed to have 15% for rent BMRs or 20% for sale. And whereas our requirements are 26% very low income and 15% low income. So am I understanding that correctly?
The percentage of the units, yes, are clearly higher than our BMR program, as you said, 15% for rental, 20% owner occupied. But in terms of meeting this, I think one of the hopes would be you can get projects that are 100% affordable or are a higher percentage of affordability than what our BMR program requires. Because, I mean, this is based on what HCD is looking at, what your housing need is, sort of independent of what your BMR program is currently.
And then through the mayor, how would a 100% affordable project be funded?
Well, you would have some opportunities, either through the city could partner through that, or through other grant opportunities. We would have to be looking for the financing. Generally, you're having, as you know, affordable housing is subsidized through market rate housing and projects. You can get affordable housing projects that are 100% funded, but in terms of, yeah, our program, looking at these numbers, our BMR program does not align with this, and I think that's true of just about any city you're going to look at.
Okay. And then also through the mayor, we have, if, all of the cities within the Bay Area have this large increase in their affordable component, so we could foreseeably have many cities essentially have their developers competing for the same funds. And would you happen to know how much funding is available through the state, like through the low-income housing tax credits? What the total amount is for the state of California?
No, I would have no idea on that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I think funding, I could just say, is one thing we recognize, is funding for affordable housing is tough in terms of meeting the needs that have been assigned.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Moore, Councilmember Chow? Questions, please.
Okay. Thank you so much for a very comprehensive presentation, especially a lot of background about this county and the state, how the performance of the South California cities. It's really good to have those data points. Really appreciate that. My question is, so what's our total? I think it's good to put things in perspective. So we need to build this many housing units. What's our current number of housing units? And affordable housing units? So what percentage we are adding?
The total number of existing built units in the city? I really don't know offhand. I'd have to look that up.
I think it's about 20,000.
That would probably be close, based on, say, three people per household, that it would be about 20,000. But I don't know the exact number.
So that's what I remember from, I think, 2014, EIR down for the last housing element.
20,000 would be close, based on the population of the city, yeah.
So adding four, 5,000 would be adding 25% in eight years?
You would be adding, yes, you would be adding a significant amount. So with what we'll be talking about, say, a housing buffer, if you were to add 5,000 to 5,500 units, the city has probably about 20,000 today. Yeah, you're looking at like 20, 25% increase, correct?
And then in terms of BMR, I think we have about 100 today, and then we would be looking at an increase of almost, almost 2,000, so 20 times of the current inventory in eight years.
Yes, if all of these units were built at the income category shown, yes, it would be a significant increase.
So do we have an estimate of how much funding is necessary to provide to fulfill this, our obligation?
No, I don't have an estimate of the funding, what it would cost to build the 2,600-plus affordable units.
So it's still about $1 million a unit? So it's still about a million dollars a unit?
I'm not sure. Do you have any idea what the average affordable unit cost is right now? I really don't know. And it would vary depending on the type of unit, certainly.
Point of order, I would encourage the questions to focus on the agenda item.
Funding is part of the agenda, okay. Another question is the fair housing assessment. That's part of the requirement for housing element.
Correct.
So have we completed that?
It was part of the draft housing element. I think it's Appendix B1 that was submitted in February.
Okay. And so we will hear about policies to address those areas?
Correct, yeah. We will be covering, at a high level, policies that are required to be addressed in the housing element update. And I think looking for feedback on which, within that area, which policies would be a higher priority? Or if there are specific areas that aren't required, that the council or members of the public would think needs to be addressed? Really, I think what would be of good interest is what is a need for this community? Because state law is really looking at it statewide with what cities need to address. What I think would be valuable input for us to get into our city's housing element would be, what does this community see as the need? And then we can work towards addressing that. But I'm kind of jumping ahead in the presentation.
Thank you. Great. Thank you, Councilmember Chow. If there are no questions, we can move on to the site selection presentation.
Okay. Okay, so yeah, we will get into, and again, that was why we had the arena slide up, was just to talk about, as we segue into meeting the site selection, which was by far the focus of the city's meetings last year. And again, the sites were selected by the city council last August, so we've had a chance to view the slide there. We could go on to the next one. We had briefly talked about the buffer, which was part of our site selection discussions last year as well. What this is essentially targeting is focusing on is making sure that we are able to account for a certain percentage in addition to our arena, to make sure that we're able to provide housing at all the different income levels. So this goes back to the no net loss law in 2017. So there's no mandate on exactly what the percentage needs to be. You're typically looking at about 25% to 30%. That was within the range of what the city had for its fifth cycle, where there was 1,400 units. And one of the reasons for this is to ensure then, for the lower income levels, that we're able to accommodate those sites and the city does not have inventory, your capacity to meet housing at the lower income levels, more so than the market rate. So this is why you want to have the buffer in place. If you had sites, say, that you were assuming were going to be built at a more affordable level and were not, you would need to have sites in place to still meet your arena at those income levels. To summarize on the sites inventory, we did have quite a few robust discussions in 2022 at the Housing and Planning Commission meetings and ultimately the city council in August. There were three city council meetings in August, two of them at the end where the sites were selected. And the city started off the process essentially looking at all the potential sites citywide that would qualify per HCD criteria. The main criteria was one just involving the size of the site, sites having to be between a half acre, one-half acre and 10 acres. So we did a very big reach. I believe we had over 400 and some properties at the first planning commission meeting that were up for consideration. We did try to narrow the focus based on the land uses on those sites, trying to contact owners, engage if there was owner interest in redevelopment and being included as a housing site. And also looking at sites that would have had constraints like fire hazards or geologic hazards or any other sort of environmental constraints that would make them poor candidates to be on the housing site. These are the type of criteria HCD is going to be looking at, is they want to see sites that can realistically develop and can even more importantly accommodate affordable housing. In terms of the discussion going through the planning commission and at the city council, there were several themes that were discussed. In terms of having more of an interest of accommodating development in the western and southern parts of the city, or I guess, as I would say, spreading development fairly equally around the city rather than consolidating it, particularly not on the east side. There was, again, less interest accommodating house east of Deansa Boulevard. And also locating housing sites to counteract declining in school enrollment, which is pretty much going statewide, certainly throughout Santa Clara County. One other issue was to choose sites that were not going to involve displacement of large numbers of existing residents, so things like apartment complexes that would maybe want to redevelop. Those sites were avoided. We didn't have any of those on our final selection list. This map, while it's at a very small scale because it's covering the whole city, what it does is it gives you an idea of, these are all the sites that were approved by the city council last August. So the yellow sites are what we call the Tier One sites, which were those we were looking at as being the prime sites for housing. The orange properties were what we called Tier Two, which were essentially seen as backup properties if there was a need to include them in order to meet the arena. And the green sites, you can see like the upper right-hand corner, which is Valco and the Hamptons. I think there's about eight of those that were spread throughout the city, other than the two large ones. Those are sites that either had fully entitled projects or had projects that were in the pipeline to be entitled. And I believe all but one of those is now fully entitled. So that's the summary of really where we were. This map is essentially all of the sites that were part of our housing element that went to HCD in February. Now, we're talking about our site selection strategy. We've had comments back from HCD. We had a fairly lengthy letter that didn't have a lot of detail, but had a lot of comments. And one of the issues we were expecting, because Cupertino, like several other cities, had a large number of pipeline units, over 3,500. So much more than the majority of our arena was met through the pipeline. One of HCD's comments is that there's a reliance or an over-reliance on pipeline sites. They did not say a specific number of units or even call out specific sites in the letter. But this was something I think we were anticipating that we were going to have to address as we submit revised drafts on the housing element. One of the state laws, AB 2011, which went into effect last fall, was not in place last August when the sites were selected. What that law essentially does is it takes commercial and office-designated properties on large commercial corridors and allows those to be developed for housing at densities that are specified by the legislation. In Cupertino's case, this would say on Stevens Creek, Deansa Boulevard, your major corridors, you would have densities of 40 and 60 units per acre. So it also sets front setbacks and building heights. The reason behind this is that you have proximity to major transportation. You're essentially going, as the AB 32 and SB 375 say in bullet number three, these are laws that date back to pre-2010 where you're getting your sustainable community strategies, trying to get land use and transportation linked more so than it typically had been, and trying to get higher density and mixed uses along transportation corridors. One of the other things we're relying on and trying to comply with HCD is our consultant, who's got quite a bit of experience dealing with HCD and has had a good track record of success on getting housing elements certified, is to provide sites that will align with what HCD's expectations are. So we're, you know, again, we're looking at sites that comply with HCD standards and are also looking at what's the realistic development potential of that site within the eight-year time period, not just will it redevelop, but will it redevelop by 2031? To summarize our pipeline projects, we had over 3,500 units in the first draft. Valco has just over 2,400 of those units. Based on what we're hearing back, this was not specified in the letter from HCD, but based on what we're hearing from them and our consultant's input, we will probably have something like 1,500 to 1,600 of those units essentially be allowed, which means not the full amount is seen as realistically developing by 2031. Similarly, with the Hampton site nearby, that had 600 units in the pipeline. It is looking unlikely that HCD would consider that a realistic development site. It has a development agreement that runs for another three years. These 600 units are entitled, but there's been really no evidence of construction or development on the property. And I think for that site, you have the added complication of you have 342 residential units on the property, which would require relocation of those residents when the site was redeveloped. So logistically, it's a more difficult site to redevelop than Valco is. And in HCD's eyes, I think that's something where that site may be seen as not realistically happening, at least at this point in time. One thing to note, as with all housing, if these sites are developed, the city will still get credit for the development of those units. It's really just a matter, again, of what is realistic and likely within the eight-year Wanted to bring this up again. We touched a little bit on AB 32 and SB 375 to try to explain where a lot of the state laws have been headed. So for going on about 20 years, you've seen more of a focus on regional planning and linking land use and transportation. Essentially, as the Bay Area has matured, this is having the Bay Area become more of a city and less of a suburb, and getting the mixed land uses you typically find in cities. These also tied with goals of reducing greenhouse gases and addressing climate change. So in the Bay Regional Plan for 2050, the heart of the city area along Stevens Creek is identified as a priority development area. And I think if you look at the city's existing general plan, which may be difficult to read, but I'll read it for you, is the first land use policy cited in our general plan says to focus higher land use intensities and densities within a half a mile of public transit service and along major corridors. So that's pretty much right in line with where AB 32 and SB 375 were going. And the way I see AB 2011, if you want to go to the next slide, is it's going more in line with those earlier laws and now looking to create the possibility of higher-density housing in these commercial zones. So this is really relatively new. It just became effective July 1, so it's effective as of this month. It is really focused on non-residentially designated properties, but it gives those properties the ability to develop as residential properties. The density and building height would vary, again, on the size of the lot and the width of the street. The commercial corridor needs to be at least 70 feet wide in order to qualify under AB 2011. It could be no more than 150 feet wide, so it's a lot of latitude. 70-foot commercial streets, not terribly wide. Certainly, as I said, Stevens Creek, Deansa are exactly the type of streets that I think that you had in mind when this legislation was passed. It does establish minimum building heights. 45 feet would be a typical minimum building height under this legislation. And it does provide a zero-foot front setback from the front property line. This is not from the curb, but from the property line of the building. Give you yet another recap is, again, it's tied to the acreage of the property, the smaller sites. If you're under one acre, you would have a 30-dwelling unit per acre density. For sites that are greater than one acre, but where the street is less than 100 feet, you'd be up to 40 units per acre. For sites that are greater than one acre, but the street is 100 feet or more, 60 dwelling units per acre. And that would be the highest density that would be allowed under the city of Cupertino under this legislation. The latter, the last category listed, sites within one-half mile of a major transit stop, that does not exist in Cupertino, so the 80 dwelling units per acre would not be applicable in this city. This is a map, again, citywide, at very high level, that's showing all of the sites that would qualify under AB 2011. So where you have pretty much that cross in the middle of your screen, the north, the south is Deansa Boulevard, the east to west is Stevens Creek. You can see by far the majority of the properties in the city lie along those two corridors where they intersect. So you have the heart of the city there, as well as Deansa, which at the very south end, the majority of those sites highlighted were already selected by the city council last August as housing sites. What I wanted to do with this slide is the blue areas would be sites that qualify under AB 2011 and also meet the size criteria specialized by HCD, the half-acre to 10-acre. AB 2011 has sites, allow sites actually up to 20 acres, so twice the size of what HCD is looking for. So we're kind of using this blue areas as a guide to say, these are the properties that would qualify and essentially be de facto housing sites under AB 2011 for the city. And what we as staff are looking as our strategy is, as we work more with HCD and our consultant and have a better and more accurate idea as to how many housing units in which sites would qualify within the 20 to 31 period is realistically developable, would be to offset any lost units with AB 2011 sites, which, as I said, housing will be able to be developed on these sites without rezoning. They would be subject to CEQA otherwise, but if they're included as housing sites, and I'm not saying all of them, but to target these to offset any housing loss, they could be included as housing sites to accommodate our arena. So that's essentially what we're looking at at our updated site selection strategy. Our consultant's feedback, Placeworks, has thought that this is a good approach to take since this is now essentially the law throughout the state. As we look at input on mostly our pipeline projects, AB 2011 sites would seem to be the best way to offset any of those that don't qualify, particularly if we focus on limiting it to the HCD size and other criteria. And again, this also provides a good framework to align with transportation and land use, which is already defined in our existing general plan, is trying to intensify and add density along the Stevens Creek corridor. That was the second area. We were going to take a break, so I guess this would be really our first break, since there was a little more meat and some new areas to that. If you wanted to take comment at this time, that was what we had planned on.
So why don't we open up for council questions specifically on this item? And before we take a little break? Okay. Councilmember Chow, please?
So on these 2011 sites, what are their current zoning? If we identify them as housing element sites, if it's office-only, I assume we would rezon them to residential or in addition to office? So it'll be mixed use? And if they are existing units per acre, do we upzone them or do we need to?
There's going to be several zoning districts. I think a lot of them, and feel free to correct me, Pugh, would be the PCG res along the Stevens Creek corridor. So you would have flexibility in land use, but certainly commercial development is allowed along this corridor. This is, this legislation is really targeting sites that are not residential only. So that's, the intent is, if this is primarily a commercial or office corridor, you could be developed as a residential property. What we would do or recommend doing as part of the housing element is for the sites that we selected that are AB 2011 sites, we could rezon them to specify an exact density and to even clarify if we wanted these to be certainly developed as residential properties. Also by doing that, they would be looked at in our environmental impact report as housing sites.
So you mean we could rezon them, but we don't have to?
You do not have to to allow housing to occur. You could facilitate their development as housing by rezoning them. And as I said, you could also specify the density. So if you wanted to have a range such as 50 to 65 or something else, which is what we're proposing for a lot of our sites, is to have a minimum and maximum density in that range, we could designate them as housing sites and treat them similarly to what we're doing with the sites that were previously listed as Tier One.
Oh, the number that were given in your slides are minimum density. So if we rezon, we can set a maximum density on those sites?
Correct. And as part of this, part of the housing element update, we're going to be setting minimums and maximums for each of the zoning districts. So you're correct, is last August, we just set minimum densities. So, you're correct, is last August, we just set minimum densities. Now, as part of developing this further, we're having, what's the minimum and what's the maximum? One of the reasons, too, we also need to have a maximum is, doing an environmental impact report, we have to be able to look at what would be the most intensive development you could have. So, the recommendation would be for the AB 2011 sites, we wanted to have, as say, a Tier 1 site, we would include them that way and treat them similarly.
So, we would set a minimum, so 2011 have a minimum height of 45 feet, and with zoning, we can set a maximum height of, say, 60 feet?
Yeah, you're going to want a minimum height that's going to comply with AB 2011, but you can have a minimum and maximum, correct?
I mean, not minimum. We can set the maximum height of 60 feet. That's what I mean, so we can...
Yeah, for all of our housing sites, we're going to be looking at setting minimum and maximum.
And the question is, for the ones we didn't choose, the 2011 site, if we did not choose them as housing element, we will not zone them, they might still be office and commercial. If someone proposed a development, 2011 only set a minimum, then could someone come in, propose the project that's 100 feet tall and say they are using 2011? And, but we don't have any standard to say, City Code says you can, the maximum is 60, so we can't even say we will have to accept that, since there is no standard on that site regarding residential?
Again, I think the questions are straying outside the scope of the housing element discussion.
Why is that?
Because you're specifically asking about sites that won't be included in the housing element.
No, that this pretend to deciding whether I include a site or not, right? So, I need to understand if we, I think, how part of housing element, we need to rezone sites in the city. So, I need to understand the consequence of not zone provide residential zoning on the 2011 sites, which is within the scope here.
Okay. Well, Luke can do his best to answer the hypothetical question.
Do you understand my question?
Through the mayor, if I may, try to interject. I believe what we're asking council tonight is to provide directions in terms of how the site inventory could be finalized. So, we're not really honing on an individual site in the hypothetical of what if. We understand that AB 2011 has already come into effect, and that's going to affect mostly Stevens Creek corridor and also De Anza Boulevard corridor. And we're not going to take all of those sites along these two corridors into the site inventory. And we're taking some of them out because some of them are just not...
I understand that. So, okay. My question is, if a site currently zoned only office and commercial, no residential, and if we don't include them as housing element, we don't apply residential zoning, could someone propose a project that could be any height and any density? Because 2011 only specified a minimum. If that question could not be answered today, could you tell me when this question could be answered? Because this is very important. This law is already effective. Someone could propose a project, so I need to understand.
Through the mayor, if I may, we don't know the answer to that question because we have been focusing on the sites within the housing element.
So, 2011 requires a minimum height of 35 or 45 feet, depending on the project, and densities between 30 and 80 dwelling units per acre, depending on the project. But there would not be a requirement to go higher than that unless the project were rezoned for a higher density, at least under AB 2011. And I think you're...
Not a requirement to go higher, but they could go higher, and there is no current limit for the city to limit, say, it needs to be max 60 feet. Someone can propose a 200-feet-tall building.
Mayor, I believe that Councilmember Chow is out of time.
Okay. Yes. Okay. I hope that the city attorney can answer me offline later.
So, any more, Councilmember Moore?
Thank you. So, Luke, I have some questions. If I'm, please correct me if I'm not understanding this properly. It looks like the, there's an assumption that has been made that HCD does not want to include pipeline projects at two particular locations, and that the strategy is to add in some AB 2011 sites which are of a certain HCD size criteria? Is that correct? In order to come up with 1,400 approximate units? Is that, am I understanding that correctly? I'm not really sure why we started into this 2011 mapping exercise, so I'd like to understand...
Through the mayor, if I may, I think I understood your question, Councilmember Moore. So, we heard from HCD that there's an over reliance, reliance on the pipeline project. We don't know where that threshold is. Through conversation with HCD staff, we got to a threshold where HCD staff is comfortable with using those pipeline units on these two particular sites. That leaves us a gap to fill up to our arena number in addition to the buffer that we need to prepare. Therefore, knowing that AB 2011 has come into effect, the consultant's strategy is to use those units to fill up the gap.
So, how are we going to select which ones of those AB 2011?
So, we would need your direction, council's direction, to say this is a good strategy and leave the details to consultant and staff to finalize on the sites.
Through the mayor, and I still have plenty of time here. Okay, so, then I think we're also making quite a stretch to think that 1,400 units are going to somehow be found sites for among these 2011, AB 2011 and HCD sites, that they're going to be located and that there's a better chance that those units where we've had no developer come forward saying they want to build a project, that those units, and you're going to need many of them, let's just think about the Coach House, I think we had 35 units in that, that's very small. We've got to get to 1,400. Somehow, we're going to have, you know, hundreds of projects suddenly flow in that are going to beat the clock on the eight-year period faster than the east side of Valco or the Hamptons. I think that's very optimistic to think that that's going to happen. It's an interesting strategy, but I'd like to have some proof, especially if we're looking back historically, for the pace of projects which have come through. It's been, we've seen it, it's been really, really slow. How are we going to get to this realistically? And why do we think that offering that suggestion up to HCD is, has a better shot than the two sites that are already entitled and they're already doing cleanup? They've already apparently finished their cleanup on the west side at Valco. It seems like they are ready to go and they're serious about that. I'm concerned about this strategy and the viability. What it seems like is that there might be developers who would like us to upzone all of these other properties and use this as a strategy for that to happen. Thank you.
Through the mayor, if I may, I think I heard Councilmember Moore answering your own question, but your point is well taken, and I do believe the consultant and staff has had a number of conversations with HCD staff. But you're absolutely right, we don't know until we submit the draft and hear back from HCD in confirmation in 90 days, 60 to 90 days.
Yeah, if I could, I think that's really one of the goals, is we wanted to update on, this is the approach if needed. There's nothing definite on the Valco site, because you're correct, the west side looks like it's ready to go. And based on our conversation, I think that's been accepted. We don't have anything definite, but I think it was a favorable conversation. The really, the crux of it's going to be is, can you demonstrate all 2,400 units built in the next eight years? Not will it build, but will all of it build? And I think that's really the issue. I mean, other sites, you know, along Stevens Creek Boulevard that would be candidates with AB 2011, it's difficult to know. We do have conversations with developers interested in certain sites, but whether they're more viable to build within that timeframe than Valco, it's hard to answer that.
Thank you. So, I'd like to ask a couple of questions. The first question is kind of a follow-up with Councilmember Moore's question. I understand we have pipeline units and we tried to put it on there in that last submission, and apparently, it's HCD's judgment saying that we, they don't, either they don't allow or they don't like, we use all the pipeline units. Is that correct? It's not a staff strategy, it's more like what the HCD's direction is?
No, it's definitely not a staff strategy, is the pipeline units, again, they were completely, it would have been, you know, we would have been negligent not to include them. These are projects that could build, so there is no reason not to include them. And the fact that you had really two large ones, that's just how it is. You had 3,000 units between the two projects. What we are going by, not only HCD's comments, but also our consultant, who's done quite a few six-cycle housing elements, they suspected as well that that's really a large chunk of your units, and for large projects, they're often phased over time. They don't build necessarily within five years, six years. Valco, for instance, while it looks like it's moving now, it's taken years to get to this point. The Hamptons has had entitlements for several years. It hasn't had an indication of redeveloping. And that's kind of the issue we face. While we have the entitlement in place, there's nothing demonstrating it's moving past that point. So, that's really the conversation we're having. We're certainly not giving up on representing that, yes, if we could get more essentially credit for them, that would be great. But I think it's also important to let the city council know, to let people who've been following the project know, that there's going to be some amount of shortfall. We're not going to get credit for all, 35, 45, I think, was what we had submitted. And in knowing that, how do we offset that loss with sites that HCD is more likely to accept? Since AB 2011 is now the law, it wasn't last year, that seems to be a logical place to start, because a lot of those sites are in the heart of the city or in places where you can get density. It's consistent with our general plan, and aligns with a lot of other state policies.
Thank you. My second question is, since 2011 already includes all the sites that is on the mapping, even if we don't put them into housing element, they still can use 2011 to build housing? Is that a correct statement?
That is correct, and I think that's also one of our reasons that these essentially now are housing sites, that putting them, designating them as part of our housing element seems to make more sense, since this is now already the law.
So, I want to thank the staff for going over, I know, I don't know of all council members, but at least I went over details of the strategies and to understand your presentation beforehand. So, my follow-up question is, it's to my understanding, since that can happen anyway, I think that's Councilmember Chow's question, too. If we don't put it in there, would it happen? It will. How it's going to happen according to 2011, maybe 2011? So, the strategy is, since it could or may happen, let's put it into our housing element so that we can at least control or know what could happen. Is that part of the strategy?
Yeah, that is absolutely correct. I mean, I look at, these sites can develop as housing under AB 2011, whether we designate them as housing sites or not.
Okay. So, instead of having to look at other sites, just, that should be enough if we consolidate some of these sites and take part of the, not all of the inventory, but part of it that HCD could probably tolerate, plus this, that would be enough to accommodate our housing elements plus the 20, 40, 20, 30% more than we planned? Is that the strategy that's going forward?
Correct. I mean, the AB 2011 sites is more, if they were to build out, it far exceeds our arena. So, we would be looking at, you know, which of those would make the most sense to include.
Okay. Thank you. Council, Vice Mayor Mohan?
Thank you, Mayor. A question for the staff, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the response that we got from HCD didn't specify that the pipeline projects were not to be included, but I thought I heard you say that the consultant thinks that, in his opinion, that this would not fly in the second draft. Is that correct?
Yes, essentially, with HCD, again, they did not mention specific numbers or even specific properties, but they had pointed out, your city seems to be relying heavily on its pipeline projects, which is true, it was well over half of our sites. No reason not to include them, they were fully entitled. That was a comment prior cities, I know San Francisco got it, others did as well, where they similarly had a lot of pipeline projects. So, the comment was not a complete surprise, it's just trying to gauge, okay, well, how much of it do we get credit for? 50%, 75%, what? And that was similarly the reaction of our consultant, is how, in particular for the larger sites, how much credit is HCD going to give us on this? Because it is a heavy reliance on the pipeline. And, you know, short of, in the case of the Hamptons, we've reached out to them to try to get a commitment from them, a schedule or anything, saying, when do you plan to redevelop? Do you have a phasing plan? Anything that we could show HCD, look, here's their intent. We just haven't been able to get that. So, it's a very imprecise science, if I can even call it a science, but it's one of those processes where there's some give and take. And this is, you know, this is what our consultant had flagged for us as well, even prior talking to HCD, is that you can't really count on getting the 100%. And that could be true even if we had far fewer projects in our pipeline.
I see. So, then that first draft back from, or the first response back from HCD was not complete? In other words, they could come back and sort of ding us for things that we had already reported in the first draft?
Not sure.
In terms of the pipeline project?
Well, yeah, I think...
Let's say we ignore this, we leave the pipeline as it is. The consultant thinks that this would not be, this would not go through...
It would be unlikely to be successful. I think, I think we would get a similar comment, probably with more detail, that we haven't really addressed their prior comment. I mean, you're either going to have to demonstrate why these are going to develop within an eight-year period more specifically, or you're going to need to look for alternate sites. And I think, from what we're hearing so far, planning to get some alternate sites that are more likely to get accepted by HCD would be the better way to go. And the fact that you now have AB 2011, which is, you know, it's here, whether you like it or not, this is something that the state did to foster the development of housing. It's a reality. So, we have a lot of sites that would qualify, and that would seem to be a better way for the city to go, because again, they're, they could develop as housing sites anyway.
Okay. One more question. So, the AB 2011 sites that you identified on this map are meant to offset the cut in the pipeline projects, right? But isn't, have you done any outreach for the AB 2011 sites along Stevens Creek and De Anza? Because that's one of the criteria, right? That the owner has to indicate some interest.
They don't have to, but we have done, we've actually done outreach to several of these properties in the past, and we plan on doing more of them as we get more focused. For instance, I know the, on the west side of Stevens Creek, where you have the former Fontana's Restaurant, the former Pizza Hut, these sites had come up in earlier discussions as well. So, like, those would be AB 2011 sites. We've had other properties along Stevens Creek where we have had developers express interest that have not filed projects yet. So, we have a pretty good indication of some sites that are showing interest, some developers that have more specific ideas with what they would like to do. Those would be properties that would be good candidates to submit to HCD, because we can support that there's a greater likelihood of them redeveloping.
And you worked the numbers that those will be sufficient to...
We're working, we need to get the numbers right, because we can't have, we, the goal is to get back to having, meeting arena and having like a 25 to 30% buffer. It's the same goal we had last year. You know, you don't want to lessen your housing sites.
Okay. Thank you, Luke.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Mohan. And Councilmember Frum, do you have any questions? Councilmember Moore has one more minute. Councilmember Frum? I'll let Councilmember Frum go first.
Thank you for the presentation. With respect to rezoning AB 2011 sites, I note that in reading the statute, it has a sort of off switch, that in essence, if you zone it slightly beyond... it slightly beyond the density that is required or allow for greater height, that you can then impose your own regular objective zoning standards. Would you see additional value in that, given that all of these sites otherwise would be eligible under SB, I'm sorry, under AB 2011, which is a ministerial process?
Yeah, I think the value in this could be getting ahead, as I know that there has also been a lot of concern expressed about loss of commercial properties along these corridors. So one of the things, while it's relatively new, and I don't know this in and out, is you can have exemptions to AB 2011 where you're essentially preserving commercial sites. And the way you would do that, again, would be to sort of zone, in addition to what AB 2011 allows, on the sites, you want to see the housing. So, you know, in a sense, you're transferring that increment to other properties in order to preserve commercial sites. And, you know, I would anticipate that's a discussion we would want to have, to start identifying which of the commercial properties along Stevens Creek in particular, the community wants to see preserved as commercial. And that would be one way of doing it and a benefit, that we are getting greater insurance that those sites will stay commercial into the future, while we're getting the density on the sites we want to see as housing.
Councilmember Frum, I mean, just to clarify, the most, the clearest exemption process in AB 2011 would apply if the parcel is zoned residential at a higher height and density than is allowed by the statute. So, you know, certainly adopting ministerial zoning that allows greater density in and by itself is an incentive to steer the project to the ministerial process. If council wanted to take the additional step and exempt, exempt the property from AB 2011, it could do that as long as certain findings were made.
And that is a thing done on a parcel-by-parcel basis?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. And you had noted earlier something to the effect of, you weren't sure if you would need to actually rezone the sites that we would be designating in the sites inventory that are eligible for AB 2011 in order to count them?
I think it would make more sense to treat them similarly to the Tier 1 sites and rezone them. Also, again, we get the benefit of they would be looked at in the EIR, they would, you know, while they're AB 2011 properties, we already have sites that are Tier 1 and subject to AB 2011, to treat them alike in that sense, that they are seen as housing sites for the city.
So is it fair to say then that that's a safer route in order to ensure that-
Very much so. And I think it also really demonstrates the city's intent, just as you would want to preserve commercial properties by designating these housing sites, I think you're really sending your indication to HCD that we see these as housing sites.
Got it. I mean, just, just as a generalized comment, it seems to me to make a lot of sense that since so many sites in the city will be eligible under AB 2011, that we might as well try to get credit for what we can and guide that development. Just a free comment, and I'll reserve the rest of my time.
Councilmember Moore, you have one minute.
Thank you. So I'd like to hear a little bit more about preserving the commercial because in Cupertino, as we know, we've got a significant retail leakage problem, and we have the CD TFA audit, so we've had a $20 million decrease in tax revenue. How would we go about making that selection? And it sounds like if you do say that you want to preserve something around the intersection of Danza and Stevens Creek Boulevard, for instance, if you want to preserve that, the cost to us is increased density and higher height for residential, I'm not sure, is that for that particular property? Or were you saying that you need to then transfer that to another location? Could you explain that a little bit more and also provide a reference for us to be able to read about this, since it's relatively new? Thank you.
Yeah, and I think if, I misstated, I think essentially it is that you would be transferring that potential to another, say, AB 2011 site, essentially upzoning that site beyond what AB 2011 already allows for residential development in order to preserve that commercial property. You would be carving that out as an exemption from AB 2011.
Pardon through the mayor, so we're not able to say, we'd like to save a mixed, save this property to be mixed use. We want to save this, this retail component if it's got 30,000 square feet of retail. We want to save that. We're okay with adding the residential. Is there a mechanism within AB 2011 that allows us to do that and have a mixed-use property at the end?
Yeah, to a certain extent. So, so AB 2011 certainly allows mixed-use properties. The other thing that AB 2011 does that's somewhat unique is it allows cities to preserve ground-floor retail and mixed-use properties, and it does not allow a density bonus waiver or concession to, well, it doesn't, it doesn't require a local jurisdiction to allow a density bonus waiver or concession to eliminate that mixed use. So it does, it does give cities another tool for preserving ground-level retail, which, you know, would usually be challenging to preserve in a density bonus project for AB 2011 projects. So there's a somewhat unusual and kind of intriguing tool in the statute.
Thank you, City Attorney's answer. And I think that's the time for this. Oh, Councilmember Frum, you have one minute and 30 seconds.
So back to AB 2011 and which sites would be chosen, which wouldn't be under it. You know, I note that in terms of general site selection for the housing element, we usually are trying to stay within HCD's prescribed half-acre to 10-acre zone. There are special, you know, there's a special safe harbor for that, that range. You don't have to prove additional things, but are there other sites that you think that we should consider, considering that AB 2011 affects properties that are up to 20 acres in size?
I mean, I think the recommendation would be to stay within the range of what HCD is looking for, even though AB 2011 allows you to go well beyond that, essentially double their maximum size. But I think staying within HCD's parameters just seems to make more sense, looking at those sites. And again, I think that the heart of the city area is really where we're looking, you know, but certainly going on the west side of Stevens Creek as well, all of that's, you know, I think, open. It's really finding which sites are we getting the most interest on or appear to be the best redevelopment candidates.
Got it. But irrespective of that, if you got interest from a property owner, you continue to examine whether there'd be an appropriate candidate for the site inventory?
Yeah, absolutely, because that would be, you know, giving us exactly what we want to be able to provide to HCD in terms of rationale for including it.
Thank you.
So thank you. I think we'll take a five-minute recess and come back with another portion of staff report. Thank you. The meeting at 6:27, and I'd like the staff to present policies and programs and site selections. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, you can hear me. I just, if you don't mind, I just wanted to sit down.
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, goals, policies, and programs. So we're going to kick off what is really the last piece of the staff presentation tonight. And it just, well, that's fine as we get to here. This pyramid, while I just thought it made a nice diagram, we're essentially at the top of this pyramid. We really haven't had the policies discussion. Like, a lot of meetings on this project, a lot discussing sites, which is understandable. But I think for tonight, what we really would like to get is some direction and feedback. We know what HCD requires in order to update a housing element in terms of goals, policies, and programs. But I think what would be helpful for, for staff and for our consultant would be to look at, what does the council, any members of the public that are going to speak, what is it that they feel that the city of Cupertino, what would be the priorities or areas to target as part of the housing element update that we should be focusing on? Because again, we haven't had this discussion. So if we can get things that are really in the shape of goals, we can develop those. What I didn't say earlier and should have is that we are planning to get a revised draft housing element back to HCD in early September at the latest. If we can do it sooner, we will, but let's, early September, that will be made publicly available for a minimum of seven days prior to us being able to send it to HCD. So the goal, though, is to try to capture some comments so we can start developing the goals into programs and policies. There's going to also be a second draft after that, so each getting more refined. It's extremely unlikely, I think, as we have talked, that this next draft would be something that HCD would certify. So there is time for input and time to refine any goals and policies, again, because we did not have this discussion in 2022. So with that, are the required programs and policies? So obvious one is making sure there are adequate housing sites, that we can provide the sites and meet our arena, that we develop policies and programs that would assist lower-income housing development throughout the city, that we look at housing constraints and try to eliminate any housing constraints, whether they're regulatory or environmental or otherwise. What can the city essentially do to remove them? What would be programs that would conserve and improve the city's housing stock? And programs that would affirmatively further fair housing, as we talked about earlier, as well as programs to preserve at-risk units. So these are all things that are required. We can't just pick one or two and focus on it. We need to address all of these as part of the update. But if there are particular categories within there, and also something like ADUs or second units, or trying to provide housing to what's commonly referred to as the missing middle, you know, things that used to be like duplexes, triplexes, you know, how would you see those things fitting into the community and what should we focus on? So, so other examples of those, so programs to assist lower-income housing development. Examples would be pursuing grant applications in order to facilitate that, providing technical support. The cities and staff could do that. Issuing notices of funding availability for below-market-rate affordable housing funds. Again, these are all very general, but they're ideas, that there are these things that there would be support for tonight, and especially if there's some consensus among the council for these things, that would be good for us to know. We could also, again, looking at housing constraints, we could adopt objective development or design standards, or continue to maintain fee waivers for affordable units or 100% affordable projects. And also evaluating things like parking standards for all residential requirements. These would, all things that would be directly addressing potential constraints to housing development. Programs to conserve, improve, or expand the city's housing stock, we could look at things like requiring a replacement of at least as many units on a site if it redevelops to make sure we're not losing units through redevelopment. To disallow any conversion of multifamily units to single-family, similar issue. And also pursuing community development block grant funds for conservation and improvements. Programs to affirmatively further fair housing, we can look at things like upzoning sites to adequately allow for arena, which I think we're already doing. We could look at things supporting, say, teacher housing or extremely low-income projects or other groups that may have special needs to try to particularly, you know, affirmatively further fair housing in a way that we're already being required to do through the housing element, but to focus on groups similar to what our community meetings did and tailor programs to target those groups. We could continue to support development of ADUs, which I think we're already doing well. That also offers, as I was saying, modest opportunities for increases in density and again enhances that missing middle in housing, which often truly is missing. We have a lot of single-family neighborhoods and you get some higher-density housing, but trying to target that, that middle sort of affordable-by-design group that is often elusive to develop in areas like this. Programs to preserve at-risk units, examples would be, we could develop policies or programs to meet with affordable housing operators on an annual basis. For ADUs, we could continue to offer streamlined pre-approved plans, for instance. I know a lot of cities are doing that. We could try to further those efforts. We could evaluate and participate in local and regional efforts on ADU programs as well. We're partnering with the county, for instance. Now, sort of shifting away from policies, I think, which will be the big part of our feedback we want to get, but to kind of summarize where we are, we received HCD's comments over two months ago. As we've talked about, they were general in nature, but pretty comprehensive, touching on a lot of areas of the housing element. And ask for quite a bit or more analysis in several areas, though some of those, I think, such as ADUs and manufactured homes, for instance, the city is already addressing those issues. While there was no specific direct feedback on our sites inventory, we've talked about that in the earlier part of the meeting, you know, other than on the pipeline. So for tonight, I think, you know, sort of staff's big asks in terms of coming away with direction from the council is our updated site strategy, again, mostly in reference to looking at the AB 2011 sites to offset any sort of shortfall we would have from losing properties or losing units. If we could get support on that, to know how we can proceed and continue to work on getting the housing element advanced towards certification. And also to get feedback, even if it's at a very general level, on the prioritization of housing policy areas. And again, I think we went through those. But if there are other particular areas, things such as addressing homelessness or transitional housing, anything that touches on housing and shelter where we could get direction from council, where your priorities would lie, I think would be very helpful for us and our consultant. Now we can go to timeline. Timeline and next steps. So we're at the far left here in August, early September. We're looking to publish a revised draft housing element, as I said, and we're looking at having additional zone, outreach opportunities regarding zoning, possibly getting a meeting, a community meeting held in late August through October. We would anticipate having two meetings to try to discuss how this additional housing, what we would need to do through rezoning to accommodate it best. I think you got a good glimpse of that on the Coach House project a month or so ago, where while it was a smaller-scale project, one of the common issues on the housing sites we're going to see is that many of these are going to back up to lower-scale, single-family neighborhoods. It's very common even along Stevens Creek and Deans Boulevard. So how are we going to make that transition through rezoning, where we're going to have much denser sites on the main corridor, transitioning to single-family? So we intend to have community meetings to focus on that and other issues, and we will be notifying everybody in advance of those meetings and hope for good attendance. September, as I earlier said, we're looking at getting the draft back to HCD, which will trigger another 60-day review period for HCD. So comments on that draft would be back ideally by early November. Throughout October, November, also, our EIR preparation will continue. Hopefully, we have the comments back from HCD early that month. We have a by-end-of-year target of publishing the draft environmental impact report, and then also beginning the revisions on our second draft housing element, which we would be getting back to HCD in January. Also in that month, we would be hopefully reviewing comments on the draft EIR. That is a 45-day comment period, as you probably know, on an environmental impact report. And then getting us towards in March and April, where we would pretty much be wrapping up everything related to the housing element, rezoning, having the final EIR available, and bringing forward all of those elements to you for the adoption hearing on the housing element, rezoning and certification of the environmental impact report. March and April, for anybody that's going to ask, could we do that any sooner? The answer would be no. We have tried to expedite this as much as we can. We're really about as quick as the slowest piece of this project, which is the EIR. There's no way to really compress that timeframe. So with what we're looking at now, we're looking at March at the soonest, April possibly the likeliest to have all of this wrapped up. So that concludes our timeline, next steps, and I think what we're really looking for at this point then is to go back and have a policy discussion on what I led off this phase of the staff presentation on.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Now, I'd like to open up for questions from the council before we go to public comments. Councilmember Charles- Councilmember Chow, followed by Councilmember Moore.
A question about the EIR. What alternatives do we are considering? I understand the one alternative is all the 2011 unit sites. So what's the maximum density assumed on those sites in this alternative?
Actually, the maximum density and the alternative we're looking at would be all of the AB 2011 sites, not just some of them, and that would be in addition to our tier-one sites. So you're looking at what would be the maximum build-out. That's the alternative. The project-
But what I mean is, 2011 only specified the minimum density, so what's assumed developed density in the EIR?
Well, I think for the sites we have rezoned, we're going to be looking at the, what the zoning would allow as a maximum, and the others would really be guided by AB 2011.
Which didn't set the max. So...
Well, I think you would assume something in the range of, say, 60 units per acre under AB 2011, where we're not designating them also as a housing site.
Mm-hmm. So the EIR has how many alternatives? Tier one?
We are going to have no project, and we're going to have the AB 2011 alternative that would be looking at the entirety of AB 2011.
That's only two alternatives? So there is also tier-one alternative and tier-two?
No.
Only two alternatives?
Two alternatives and one project. So we have the project, then we have a no project, which is required under CEQA, and then we have AB 2011.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay. That's interesting.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore?
Okay. Thank you, Luke, for the suggestions for the housing policy areas. I'm in agreement with what you have. I'd like to know how many of the BMRs are actually terming out, because it seemed like a few of them are actually approaching their limit, so, and that's something you can provide offline, but I'm curious about that, and also, are we having any luck with SB9? And I'm going to say, from observation, what I'm seeing is that the single-family homes are being torn down, and on the same lot, I'm just seeing bigger house, single-family house. I'm not seeing SB9s happening in the city. Is that about right? Like, how many SB9s have we had?
Go ahead, take it. I'll defer to Pew on this one.
Good evening, council. Pew Koosh Planning Manager. We haven't had, we actually have one SB9 application, but we've had a lot of interest in it, and so there are at least 20 properties that are interested in developing, so they're just trying to figure out the ins and outs of it to make an application.
Okay. Okay, good. And then I had some wish that, like, our BMR fund, which has somewhere between $5 and $6 million, if that could be opened up for the city's consideration to perhaps combine, we're looking at selling the burn property, if there was some way that if we were to sell a property, that we could combine that funding and purchase another piece of property along a transit corridor, perhaps, for some transitional housing, to make that available. It could also be potentially for RV parking temporarily, and transitional housing could have, it could be any number of things, from the two, the two units, which are the little for formerly unhoused individuals, or all the way up to the teacher housing, which is modular and more permanent. I think that might be interesting. I wasn't really clear on what we have in our general plan, if the BMR funds are allowed to be used that way, but it might be an interesting policy change for that. And with regards to the ADUs, I would like to see a little bit more data on it, to know if we're, if we are seeing people opening those units up to rent, or are a lot of homeowners using it for sprawl on their own lot, to just essentially have an easier way to get more square footage for their property. And I will leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Questions from Councilmember Flo and Vice Mayor Mohan? If not, I would open up to public comment.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
Were you looking primarily for questions right now?
Questions, yes.
Or for discussion from us?
Just five minutes of questions.
Then I will wait on my time.
So actually, I have one question, and I think that's answered by one of the questions, is when we're doing EIR, we're doing all sites, include all AB 2011 sites?
Yes, the alternative is going to look at all AB 2011.
Whether they're in the housing elements or not?
Correct.
Okay. And the reasons for doing it is?
We wanted to have an alternative that was really looking at fully what could be built out as housing, and that seemed to be, you know, again, a logical thing to look at as, you know, a more inclusive housing project.
Understand. And today, you're looking at the council to provide you directions of to what policies to work on, what policies to select sites, what policies we'd like to, you know, to work on, maybe ADUs, or is that what you're looking at?
Yeah, and I think at, again, a very general level, I mean, we didn't have a lot of detail in the presentation, because we haven't had this conversation. I think we need to work from the broad to the narrow, and I think, as Councilmember Moore just cited, transitional housing, like, that's perfect, is, should we be, should we be focusing on that? How should we be focusing that? So if there's consensus on the city council, say, to do more in terms of transitional housing, we can develop that further in our housing element. So that's, yeah, exactly what we're looking for tonight.
As for constraints, for example, you know, it mentions parking and other constraints. Are, like, setback lines, and are they considered constraints? Do you, if we want to have directions on that, is that part of the direction that the council can make? Or is that too specific?
It's not necessarily too specific. If you thought, you know, development standards were posing such a setbacks, a constraint to housing, with the flexibility we're seeing under the density bonus law, I don't know that it necessarily really is anymore. I mean, even parking requirements can be lessened, but parking is certainly, you know, a common issue, that I think as housing gets more dense, you're not typically going to see really any projects building to the city's current parking requirements, whether they're overcoming that through density bonus law or not. So I think it would be fair to say, if you wanted to consider looking at the parking standards, to sort of get them more in line with enabling this development, that would be a fair way to go.
Okay. And so my other question is, I, for example, I understand, at least I heard from a couple people, that the setback line for second story is a constraint of building, you know, adequate bedroom on second story. Is that going to be better to be, talk about during our house, our general plan amendment, or is it, can be part of the strategy that we can instruct the staff to look at?
Through the mayor, if I may, I believe you're referring to maybe single-family housing constraint, but the housing element aims at producing the number of units. I know the CDD is also working on objective, objective design standard, which will be brought back to council for consideration that will apply to all of the housing product. So what we're hoping to do tonight is to maybe have council provide direction to, if setback or development standards is considered as a constraint, what can we do to be more flexible, or to not be seen as an obstacle from producing additional units?
Understand.
Second story typically is not additional unit, but it's just enlarging the housing size.
Right. That clarified my question. This is a little bit into the more of the different areas.
The development standard as opposed to the housing element policies.
Understand. Okay, that's what I need the answer from. Thank you.
Mayor Way, I guess I would add that, I mean, I think Luke's correct, that, you know, to the extent that we set the density, you know, the density bonus law is going, is going to allow developers to work around development standards that don't accommodate that density. That said, I would say, looking at standards, like, you know, setting a parking standard that's more realistic than that density, or even looking at other development standards, I think that would be looked on favorably by HCD as a sign that the city is, you know, serious about eliminating barriers to the production of housing.
Understand. Okay, so I conclude my question. If there are no questions from my fellow council members, I'm going to open this up for public comments. Do we have any cards and hands raised?
Yes, mayor, we have 14 cards to speak from Community Hall, and I see about, probably about, let's see, two more, we have about 12 hands raised on Zoom.
26. So I would really like to keep the public comment under one hour, so I'm going to say let's do two minutes per public comment. I think that might just equal about 60 minutes, about 60 minutes. And then people can still raise their hands in a Zoom within the first 10 minutes, right?
Nine minutes, yes.
10 minutes, yeah. So please have two minutes per public comment, please. Thank you.
Mayor, I would recommend that you be, would you like people to be able to consolidate their time, or would you like people not to be able to consolidate their time?
I would allow consolidating their time.
Okay. Well, what rules for consolidation would you propose?
What, I think our regular rule is, maximum is 10 minutes.
Normally, if you have, if you can consolidate with a total of five other speakers, you get 10 minutes.
Right.
But otherwise, consolidation of time is not allowed?
Yes. I'll stick to our past council member menu.
Okay.
Okay. Is that clear to the public? I hope that's clear to the public. If you want to consult your time, you can have up to, you can have five person in 10 minutes. Else, it's two minutes per person. Councilmember Flo?
Yeah, if you could just clarify what that rule would be, excuse me, for people who are commenting online, and how that might work.
I think the same rule applies?
So people can take advantage of that online, they'll just, they'll just need to, the speaker that's called on will just need to identify other speakers with their hands up, and then those people who are identified will rely on you, on, you know, acting in good faith and lowering your hand, so we don't, you don't get twice the time.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so, let's see, we have, so anyone wishing to comment on this item, please have your hand raised in the next nine minutes, or if you, if you are, that is, if you're attending by Zoom, if you are attending in person, please submit a request to speak card. Our first three speakers will be Shinpei, Gwyn Azar, and Jennifer Griffin. As a reminder, you have two minutes. Shinpei, are you here? Okay. I see you approaching. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and city staff. My name is Shinpei Lu, and I'm here behalf of Cupertino Youth Climate Action Team as one of their co-leads. While current draft of the housing element does mention sustainable solutions in accordance with the Climate Action Plan 2.0, it fails to clearly emphasize and promote sustainable solution to battle the ongoing climate crisis. Transportation in California remains to be a top sector, 38%, in terms of emissions of greenhouse gases, according to California Air Resources Board. Alternate or green reforms or transportation are therefore necessary to decrease emissions and to mitigate the effects of the climate crisis. The housing element draft fails to address this fact by not promoting use of public transit, like buses, as well as walking, biking, conjunction with the planning of the placement and building housing. Public transportation offers some following environmental benefits, such as reducing greenhouse gas emissions and reducing air pollutants. In addition, while briefly mentioned mixed use and denser developments, it needs to emphasize and strongly direct to variety housing other than single-family homes, such as apartments, duplexes, and condos to promote denser neighborhoods, which are more sustainable for environments and car-dependent suburbia. More detailed emphasis should also be added for mention of building of and modifying of homes in Cupertino to include, to make it more sustainable, including adoption of renewable energy, such as solar panels, green roofs, passive-active solar heating, eco-friendly slash recycled building materials, et cetera, needed for more sustainable homes for residents living here. The climate crisis is now. We cannot wait for more effects of climate crisis to come to push us into action. Action must be taken now. Please put in more effort on promoting sustainability within housing element. Urge you to Build Right Foundation for Future Generation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Gwyn Azar, followed by-
Please no clapping. Thank you.
Welcome.
Yes, hello. Good evening, council members. Thank you, Mayor Way. My name is Gwyn Azar. I'm a born and raised Cupertino resident. I grew up in the Rancho Rincana neighborhood. I'm home for the summer from UC Davis, so I'm studying environmental policy, and I'm here also in support of the Cupertino Youth Climate Action Team, which I led for years in high school. And I believe that the housing element is a really exciting and key opportunity for Cupertino to further its sustainability goals, seeing as the vast majority of emissions attributed to the city are from on-road transportation emissions, as outlined in the Climate Action Plan. It's really great seeing all the other sustainability and emission reduction initiatives, and how much progress we've seen in the last few years in terms of emissions reductions. But to reach our reduction goals, I think it's really necessary to tackle transportation emissions, not just by, you know, more bike lanes and EV charges, which are both great, but by making it possible for people of all income levels to live in the same city that they work in and that they go to school in. I see the fact that our city is mostly zoned for single-family housing as a detriment to a future of transit corridors and generally efficient and sustainable use of our limited land. As a young person, my pride for our city doesn't come from this idea of, like, a white piglet fence, single-family housing, but more from the city's ability to progress and adapt for the needs of the future. So I just hope that the city can strengthen this housing element by prioritizing progress and remaining committed to its climate goals through higher-density, affordable housing in places that will be accessible to current and potential future transit hubs, and promote bikability, walkability in the city. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Gwyn. Next, we have Jennifer Griffin, followed by Jean Bedord, followed by Reverend Robin Papa.
I'd like you all to know that you may think that people weren't involved during the Florida area ratio, but I miscarried in the middle of it. That was a wanted child. We had worked 18 months to go to the artificial insemination, to have a child. Is HCD going to give me my baby back? It would have been 18 to 17 years old. That is the passion that goes into this. Rancho Rincana was a crime dump when I moved into it as a single female working in the tech industry. Nobody gave me a break. My parents were scared to death. They thought we were going to be murdered. And look at Rancho now. We're the ones that built it. Nobody wanted to move in there. Was terrible crime rate. This was in 1995, and you can look back at the records, but for a single woman going in there, working swing shift, give me a break. I am really, really concerned that HCD has wasted two years of my life. They lied to the public. They said that in 2021, the public would be engaged, and we gave our time. I have four elderly relatives that are over 90, that require a great deal of upkeep. I could have had a child, but I didn't. I have parents that I would give my life for, and we got them through COVID, every single one of them, in every condition that they have. And I really resent it when groups like HCD lie to me and take up my valuable time in three years of coming here, and then completely wipe all of our work off. Okay, I've got two seconds. You're not even going to hear anything.
Thank you, Jennifer.
But believe-
You're muted now. Thank you. Next, we have Jean Bedord, followed by Reverend Robin Papa, followed by Sudharas Kodapati. Welcome, Jean.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Way, Vice Mayor Mohan, council members and staff. My name is Jean Bedord, and I am a Cupertino resident. I want to commend staff for their hard work, professionalism, and, yes, fortitude in providing this update for the housing element. I participated in all of the 2022 sessions, including the many, many hours that the Planning Commission and the City Council spent on-site inventory. I was disappointed by the so-called listening sessions, which were inadequate for community engagement and the AFFH compliance. I was even more disappointed that policies and programs to implement the new housing element were given little attention by the previous Planning Commission and council. It's now halfway through 2023. You have feedback from HCD. You have feedback from HCD. And the community outreach for the first draft is now over a year old. There are new housing laws. So now it's time for major revisions. I want to draw council's attention to the twenty-page document submitted by Cupertino For All, which provides extensive policy and program recognition, which was inadequately expressed in the first draft. The four-page summary table specifically addresses how the city can meet HCD requirements for an approved housing element. It's time to stop rehashing failures in twenty-twenty-two and focus on complying with twenty-twenty-three laws. The city is well-positioned with its professional staff to judge the ever-changing sentiments in Sacramento. Thank you.
Next, we have Reverend Robin Popoff, followed by Siddharth Kodapati, followed by Cassandra Magagna. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Way and City Council members and staff. My name is Reverend Robin Popoff, and I am the deacon at Saint Jude's Episcopal Church here in Cupertino. Tonight, I will be reading to you a letter from the parish's Social Justice Outreach Committee. Dear Cupertino City Council, People deserve to have safe and affordable places to live. The Cupertino housing element is the plan for how Cupertino will build enough housing to meet the diverse needs people at every different stages in life and income levels. We urge you tonight to create a new housing element that is ambitious in its goals to meet the city of Cupertino's RENA allocation, while giving priority to extremely low, very low, and low-income housing units. We ask that each income category include specific objectives for new construction, rehabilitation, and conservation. We also ask that part of the plan include more intentional outreach to and in partnership with faith-based institutions and nonprofits. The end goal should be to increase the quantity and diversity of housing options in Cupertino, leading to an inclusive, equitable, and healthier community. By seizing the opportunity, this opportunity to be ambitious, real progress can be made toward that goal. Thank you for this opportunity to share concerns on this matter, and we appreciate your consideration of your input. Sincerely, the Social Justice Outreach Committee for Saint Jude's, signed by Judy Foote, Roy Hader, Liz Mulford, Jennifer Sharon, Susan Witherpoon, Kathy Yates, the Reverend Aaron Kleinfeldter, Saint Jude's priest, and myself.
That is true. Thank you. Next, we have Siddharth Kodapati, followed by Cassandra Magagna, followed by Philip Nguyen. Welcome, Siddharth.
Good evening to the City Council and staff. Thanks for allowing me to speak. My name is Siddharth. I went to elementary school here in Cupertino over at Garden Gate. I currently work in Cupertino, and I also happen to coach the badminton team over at Cupertino High. I want to comment in favor of a housing element that's compliant with state law and one that emphasizes abundant and affordable housing. I hope the City Council pursues a plan that accommodates a significantly greater amount of housing than previous drafts, both to avoid losing local control and to meet the scale of the housing crisis. And if I can comment on the other agenda item, I also believe that the city should not oppose SB four-twenty-three for the same reasons. I've seen firsthand the consequences of inadequate housing supply. My coworkers and I have to commute long distances to our offices here, which contributes to traffic and pollution. Few of us can consider permanently moving here, which makes it hard for people to become invested in this community. As for the student-side coach, most of them will have to either move away from their hometown or live with their parents indefinitely. And even at their young age, I've seen the stress this can cause. An ambitious housing element with significantly expanded supply of affordable housing will allow Cupertino to meet this crisis. It will benefit the environment, allow the city to retain local control, and help build a more resilient and vibrant community here. I also hope that the city can consider forward-thinking policies such as increased height limits and reduced parking requirements in order to meet this goal. And I also feel that the city should proactively work with VTA to provide improved transit to serve these future residential developments. Thank you for allowing me to speak and for all your hard work.
Thank you, Siddharth. Next, we have Cassandra Magagna, followed by Philip Nguyen, followed by Nicole Fan. Welcome, Cassandra.
Good evening, Mayor Way and Vice Mayor Mohan and council members and staff. My name is Cassandra Magagna. I am the new Assistant Manager of Public Policy at West Valley Community Service. So nice to meet you all. I'm here today to advocate for the populations the housing element will affect. As many of you guys know, West Valley Community Services serves unhoused, low-income, and families in this community. And as an organization, we want to support an inclusive housing element that takes these populations into consideration in the new redraft. As this redraft proceeds, we are here to show our support for affordable housing for all income groups with an emphasis in unhoused and extremely low-income populations, as these are the ones who are highly impacted in this community. In this new redraft, our hope is that City Council takes into consideration the preservation and the creation of a safeguard for existing affordable homes and the families that live in it, the creation of smart climate-friendly projects that promote various developments and an increased access to transit corridors. And lastly, we hope that the new draft will consider homelessness and the development on transitional housing, self-safe shelters, and additional resources for unhoused populations. We are also here as an ally for Cupertino For All, so I will support them in their twenty-page policy and program summary. Thank you.
Thank you, Cassandra. Next, we have Philip Nguyen, followed by Nicole Fan, followed by Neil Park McLintock. Welcome, Philip.
Hello, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Philip, and I went to high school at Monovista, and I also went to Deans College. So as we've seen in weeks previous, we have had sequences of record-breaking global temperatures. There was an ice flood in Italy last weekend. Sicily is literally on fire, and sweltering heat and drought is here in California. The city of Cupertino has a vital opportunity to address the housing crisis as well as the climate crisis at a municipal level by passing an ambitious housing element that plans for transit-oriented development, where we can rely less on our cars and be able to walk, bike, transit to the places we need. Young families and seniors are also priced out and cannot afford to live in Cupertino. And as a consequence, our schools are losing enrollment, and our city services and parks lose funding. Let us support our city with adequate and accessible housing for young families, seniors, students, and Cupertino workers. If it wasn't clear today, I'm here to speak in support of a compliant, ambitious housing element, including the policies and program recommendations from Cupertino For All on housing production, resident protections, and preservation of homes. So let's use this crucial opportunity to do our housing element process right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Philip. Next, we have Nicole Fan, followed by Neil Park McLintock, followed by Eric Poikon. Welcome, Nicole.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. I'm Nicole, and I'm a born and raised Cupertino resident. We have a huge opportunity to pass an ambitious housing element for the city of Cupertino. California is currently in a massive housing crisis, and the only way to address that is to provide adequate housing for those who need it, and a lot of people need it. There are Apple employees, college students, and everyone in between who would love to live where they need to go, and we can address those needs. We are also facing climate disasters more frequently and intensely with droughts and floods worldwide, and a huge source of greenhouse gas emissions from California are from single occupancy vehicles. Cupertino can address this at the city level by approving plans that prioritize transit-oriented development, providing, provide housing accessible to transit so citizens can live where they work, so they can walk, bike, or take transit there. I urge the City Council to pass an ambitious housing element, including the policy and program recommendations from Cupertino For All. This is not a detriment to Cupertino and its residents, but a wonderful opportunity for us to bring more life to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Next, we have Neil Park McLintock, followed by Eric Poikon, followed by John Zhao. Actually, I think John Zhao is now on Zoom, so we will get to him later. Welcome, Neil.
Hi, would it be possible if Sean and I could do, Sean is on Zoom, if we consolidate to do something that, okay, I'm seeing head that she-
No, that's, that's, unfortunately, that's not, that's against the rules.
No, that's totally fine. Okay, so I guess just, I would ask, yeah, just remember that it was supposed to be two parts. Anyway, it doesn't matter. Hello, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I was gonna tag team with Sean Hughes, our policy director, to provide an overview of our policy and program summary menu from Cupertino For All. Underneath all of the technical aspects of the housing element, fundamentally, this is about whether or not we can allow people of all backgrounds to be able to call a place like Cupertino home, a high-opportunity zone that has given so much to people like myself, who grew up here, and to each of you on the dais as well. We are joined by the folks who are here today, and then also over a hundred fifty people who over the past couple of weeks signed on to a petition for the city of Cupertino to pursue an ambitious direction for this new draft of the housing element. We'd also like to thank Silicon Valley at Home and Housing Choices, both organizations whom work tirelessly to make sure we have a place to call home in Silicon Valley and whose policy recommendations as well we think are worth listening to equally. I care deeply about Cupertino, as do the rest of us who are here as well. And sometimes when we want our community to truly thrive and when we love it enough, that also means being willing to look into the mirror and see when change is important and when it's necessary. And the housing element is a really beautiful opportunity that I think that we shouldn't view as a cost, but rather as a benefit. And we can leverage that to get new sources of revenue, especially as we talk about potential huge budget constraints that might be coming up, as well as just an opportunity for us to better fund our schools, provide more enrollment, and just have more city services in general and more vibrant spaces, more places we can call community. Sean will go into more detail about the specificity of our policy recommendations. And I would ask that you view them as sort of a menu of options you can choose from, from the community. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Neil. Next, we have Eric Poikon, followed by Justin Deng, followed by Lisa Warren. Welcome, Eric.
Okay, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Way and honorable council members. My name is Eric Poikon. I am the president of the Silicon Valley Young Dems. The city of Cupertino finds itself in a critical moment of being a city that creates housing, a housing element that is inclusive and affordable to its denizens, or one does the opposite. The community itself faces an affordability crisis that even households earning over a hundred thousand dollars annually struggle to afford apartments with rents over three thousand dollars a month and home prices over two million. Cupertino needs to take a decisive action by creating housing opportunities that specifically address the housing needs of the Deans College community, arguably the largest community of young adults in the city. The initiative would be in line with AB six-eight-six, California's Commitment to Fair Housing, which mandates every city in the state to update their general planned housing element to promote fair housing opportunities. Students at Deans currently experience the highest level of insecurity, as evidenced by twenty-twenty's Basic Needs Survey that revealed that forty percent of students were facing housing insecurity and twelve percent were experiencing homelessness. Consequently, these students have been deprived of suitable living conditions of the service that continues to affect many students in twenty-twenty-three. In light of this, as Cupertino proceeds with developing a new housing element, we strongly urge implementation of subsequent programs, policies, and housing sites, inventory locations that are aligned with specific needs of Deans College students. This is a unique opportunity for the council to develop a housing element that caters to the diverse needs of the community encompassing of teachers, first responders, retirees, low-wage workers, students, and families regardless of documentation status. We appreciate your prompt attention to this matter and look forward to the results. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Next, we have Justin Deng, followed by Lisa Warren, followed by Stephen Sharp. Welcome, Justin.
Hi, Cupertino City Council. My name is Justin. I'll be honest, I'm just staying here for the summer. I actually came from SoCal, and I'm a student at UC Light. Which Mayor Way, I heard you're an alumnus of. But the point is, I'm a tech builder, not an organizer. But I'm here in support of Cupertino For All because this is an actual issue I strongly believe in. Like many others, I've come for the opportunity, the greatest place on earth for tech, Silicon Valley. And I'm only able to be here because I was given the generosity of a landlord charging me only thirteen hundred a month for a hundred-square-foot bedroom, split between my friend and I, which made it affordable. Because, solely because we were students, as opposed to the two thousand a month quoted to me by every other landlord we talked to. I was told by that landlord that when he first picked up his home in two thousand and seven, it cost him five hundred thousand. That same home now goes for three million. I'm sure many of you guys came here at one point as well, possibly for the dot-com boom, possibly for other reasons, but many for opportunity as well. And even those who have lived here most of your whole life, you probably stayed because of how great an environment it is, having been built on the backs of tech innovators and those seeking opportunity in this place. And I wanted to say that in a world that costs three million to enter, there is no new generation of builders, no heart of what Cupertino is world famous for. This place really is the embodiment of the American dream, and I do strongly believe that the part, part of the only way to keep it like it is is to keep Cupertino For All under an ambitious housing element like the one proposed today. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Next, we have Lisa Warren, followed by Stephen Sharp. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. Oops, sorry. Screen went blank. Don't start, Kirsten. Okay. So I'm gonna read some of what I sent earlier today, not knowing if you've read it. It's just basic. And then I'll add some other things. So I'm hoping that when you consider what staff presented tonight, and they're asking you to do, there are many important factors, but I highlighted four. And I'm gonna add a fifth now, learning some new information tonight. So what I ask you to do is to honestly and diligently calculate and identify sites that are equivalent and balanced throughout the city, west, east, north, and south. Consider unit type, affordability, density, height, open space, and neighborhood schools. We need the city to be balanced. There's a great cry for inclusion, but if it's not balanced, it's not really inclusion. So I also did not know that you could be considering and asking for exemptions from AB twenty-eleven, which I think if you, if it is the best or only way to preserve retail and hopefully gain retail, it's really worth considering and doing. There will be trade-offs, no doubt, but we leak retail already. And as Luke had mentioned in his statements, you know, we're significantly, we're gonna be significantly, we're adding a significant amount of housing, is what he said. And that alone supports the need to preserve the retail we have. You can't have a walkable, bikable city if all you have is housing and office. People need to do other things. They can't lose what we have, and we already don't have enough essential retail to support what we have living here already.
Thank you, Lisa. That is your time.
Thank you.
And our final speaker in Community Hall will be Stephen Sharp. Welcome, Stephen.
Hi, good evening. I wanted to talk about pipeline projects, because there's been a lot of misinformation about that. I was looking at the other cities' housing elements and pipeline projects. HCD can partially or completely reject them if A, the project has not been approved by the city or county, if the local jurisdiction has been obstacles in the way of the project, if the property owner has stated that they will not be proceeding, or if the project will not be built or at least started prior to the end of the cycle. None of these are the case in Cupertino. If you look at the five projects in the current RENA, one has been completed, Veranda, one is under construction, Westport. Marina will begin demolition and construction by twenty-twenty-five. The Rise, which is fifty percent affordable, presumably will begin construction once they have completed their cleanup of the site. And last October, former Mayor Paul and myself, we met with Irvine Company down in Long Beach during the League of California Cities Conference, and they have not abandoned the Hamptons Project. The issue which they stated to us was, you know, currently, the cost of building, there is a glut of unaffordable luxury housing in the Bay Area. At the same time, there's a huge shortage of affordable housing. And we're all aware of the impact the pandemic has had, including Cupertino and the whole Bay Area losing population, which has reduced the demand for the high-cost rental housing. And if HCD does reject our housing- the demand for the high-cost rental housing. And if HCD does reject our housing element because of pipeline projects, we will have to find more sites to compensate. But it's not accurate to say that these are automatically disqualified. Um, another thing brought up at League of Cities was the need to not subsidize developers from the general fund and to keep impact fees at the level necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. And so we will now move to Zoom. Um, we have 19 people with their hands raised within the nine-minute limit. Just a reminder, we have two minutes allowance for the public comment. If you're designating a person to speak as a group, you need five people pulling their time, and all five people must have their hands raised. So we'll start with Janet Van Zorin, followed by Henry Wajaja, followed by Madden Ho Choi. Welcome, Janet. Uh, Janet, you'll need to unmute yourself. There you go.
Hello. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Uh, it looks like you just muted yourself again. We could hear you.
There.
There you go. Okay. So I understand you have a slide that you'd like to share. I'll share my screen now.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Way and City Council members and staff. Um, my, uh, my screen just went blank.
Well, it's, it is showing on the screen for the viewers.
I, I, I can see that, but I can't see my own script. Um, yes, this is very frustrating. Um, well, I, I wanted to point out that the, um, as you can see on the screen, that the, um, California Department of Developmental Disabilities Services Act and the U.S. Supreme Court's 1999 Olmsted decision entitled people with developmental disabilities to receive community-based services that allow them to live in the least restrictive community setting. Furthermore, local jurisdictions are required to act, assess, and plan specifically for the housing needs of people with developmental disabilities in their, in their housing elements. However, the, the draft that has already been written has no goals and no policies regarding the specific inclusion of housing for persons with developmental disabilities. This, um, is not only unacceptable, but it's illegal as well. Um, it's very unfortunate that, that we are in this situation where people, um, with developmental disabilities, um, are unable to find housing in Cupertino and are unable to live in their hometown where they grew up. Um, I think it's very important that we give them consideration, that we find out and state exactly what their housing needs are, and that we come up with goals that indicate how many units of affordable housing
Thank you, Janet. That was your time.
we're trying to attain.
Thank you. I did allow you a little extra because you were having some technical issues. Uh, next, we have Henry Wajaja, followed by Madden Ho Choi, followed by Ryan Globus. Welcome, Henry.
Hello, Mayor, and Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Henry Wajaya. I am a student of Cupertino. Um, I care deeply about issues of affordable housing and the quality of our housing element. And let me just start with my story, honestly. I moved to Cupertino. I came from a place on the east coast of the United States where rent, there was rent control. And I came to Cupertino where there was a place without rent control, rent prices were going through the roof, house prices are going through the roof. And I'm here, I'm a student trying to go, and I go to Cupertino High School right now. Cupertino High School is an amazing school. It's an amazing school, and having an ambitious housing element and making housing affordable for everyone is something that really, really should be done, to give every student that chance to go to Cupertino High School, especially when Cupertino High School offers like enriching programs. Education there is great, the community there is great, and the programs there are also great. I know I'm, I read, I heard like Siddharth, um, Siddharth from the Cupertino Badminton team. So, yeah, just an example of one of the amazing programs at Cupertino High School. And honestly, if we can get this ambitious housing element to work, we can have a place where every student comes and enjoys their time in Cupertino. Additionally, student enrollment is declining. In a recent CAC study by the, by the FDUHSD Board, I was a member on the CAC, just FYI, student enrollment is declining really severely, and having an ambitious housing element will really help the student, will help the student enrollment decline. So, yeah, I yield my time.
Thank you, Henry. Next, we have Madden Ho Choi, followed by Ryan Globus, followed by Glenn Fishler. Welcome, Madden.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Great to be here. Hello, Mayor Way and members of the City Council. My name is Madden. I'm a freshman at UC Berkeley. Uh, I'm a former student at Cupertino. I went to preschool here, kindergarten here. I took summer camps. Both my parents worked here. I love hanging out with my friends here in the summer. Um, I'm here to voice my strong support for an ambitious housing element that includes the policy and program recommendations. This element should focus on housing production and protections for tenants. By aiming for homes at all income levels, addressing regional fair housing disparities, and leveraging new state housing laws, we can maximize affordability in Cupertino. Cupertino is such an amazing city with thousands of good jobs, natural beauty, plentiful nature and trails, and close access to the entire South Bay. By approving housing projects that promote walking, biking, public transit, we can make significant strides in combating climate change. By slashing commute times, we can slash carbon emissions. This is our chance to restart the housing element process and do it right. Um, developments like Cupertino Main, it's such a beautiful neighborhood, beautiful neighborhood and shopping center. We should have more beautiful neighborhoods and shopping centers like that. I just, I don't know. I love Cupertino. I'm not an expert in housing, but I just think that young people like me, seniors, people who are low income, deserve a chance to live in this beautiful city. I wholeheartedly support this council in pushing for a new, much, much stronger housing element. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Madden. Next, we have Ryan Globus, followed by Glenn Fishler, followed by John Zhao. Welcome, Ryan.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Uh, my name is Ryan Globus, and I work at Apple. I'm a software engineer, although I'm speaking on behalf of myself tonight. Um, and I wanted to call in and, and ask the council to support a compliant and ambitious housing element, following some of the recommendations from Cupertino for All. Uh, and when I say ambitious, I really mean it. Um, we need to go above and beyond just the Rina minimums. Uh, we are in a crisis, you know, even for folks that are working at Apple, like my coworkers. Um, there's a sense of, from a lot of my coworkers, especially those who are in their twenties, you know, these are incredibly hard, uh, hardworking people. They're smart, they're kind. Uh, but there's a sense that they have limited time here because it's so expensive. And they'll work here as long as they can, but when they wanna buy a home or have kids and send them to good schools, they can't afford to do that here. And so instead, after five, 10 years, they'll move to Seattle, or Austin, or Denver, or Chicago, or somewhere else, because it's too expensive here. Um, just recently, a friend of mine who's a software engineer, uh, wanted to buy a home and she couldn't afford to do it here. So instead, she's living out in Tracy and is driving over 100 miles round trip a day for her commute. Uh, and finally, I want to end on, when I, when I first started my job, I met a woman. I'd have lunch with her occasionally. She worked on the custodial staff. Um, and she couldn't, she was a single mom. She couldn't afford to pay the rent. And so she had to move out to the Central Valley. She was working at one of the most valuable and profitable companies in the world and couldn't afford the rent here. And so I urge you to please be ambitious. Let's throw everything at the wall and see what works, uh, and, and start to address and tackle this housing crisis. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ryan. Next, we have Glenn Fishler, followed by John Zhao, followed by Sujata Venkatesharaman. And, uh, welcome, Glenn.
Hello, Mayor Way, Vice Mayor Mohan, City Council members and city staff. I'm Glenn Fishler. I've been a Cupertino resident since 1997, and I'm representing myself. I'm excited to see this topic on tonight's agenda, as I care deeply about the need for the city to address its diverse housing needs at all income levels, especially low income, and sustainable community development. For the next revision of Cupertino's housing element, I want to encourage the City Council to provide guidance to and create policies for city staff and their consultant to create a much more ambitious housing element that quickly brings us into compliance with HCD's requirements, and which will give the city local control over our housing element future versus risking how the state might dictate what happens with housing in our community. I'd also like to encourage you to consider the policies and recommendations that Cupertino for All sent to the City Council in preparation for tonight's meeting. CFA's recommendations provide an excellent framework for your consideration. Thank you all for your hard work.
Thank you, Glenn. Next, we have John Zhao, followed by Sujata Venkatesharaman, followed by Peggy Griffin. Welcome, John.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is John Zhao. I serve on the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission, but I'm speaking for myself only. Uh, I grew up in the city of Cupertino, uh, went to Eaton, Lawson, Cupertino High School, and I still live here right now. And I'm speaking in support of an ambitious compliant housing element. I urge the City Council to do whatever we can to ensure that we can build the housing and plan for the type of community that we need to address the needs of everyone who is wanting to live here. Uh, I am, support Cupertino for All's policy and program recommendations. I'm not gonna go through all of them. Uh, one thing I do want to highlight is that we must implement strong protections for renters and preserve affordable homes that we currently have. So thinking about the three Ps, not just to produce, but to preserve and to protect. I think the city should also consider additional programs that don't simply rely on market solutions for housing. The one example of this is using a tool like a community land trust to take homes out of the speculative housing market and make them permanently affordable. We already have local organizations that are doing this, like the South Bay Community Land Trust. And we can also explore the possibility of working with the Tamian Nation, the indigenous people of this land, and returning land to their stewardship. So just want to encourage the City Council to explore all the different innovative possibilities that are available to us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John. Next, we have Sujata Venkatesharaman, followed by Peggy Griffin, followed by Ming Egan. Welcome, Sujata.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, um, and the council. My name is Sujata Venkatesharaman. I am the Executive Director of West Valley Community Services. I thank the staff for all their hard work. My hope is that today, city of Cupertino will strengthen the housing element by making sure that we have a, a plan that will pass and is in compliance with the state law. That is move forward with a vision and an ultimate goal to build inclusive community where everyone can choose to work and live in Cupertino, a community that is senior friendly for people with disability and friendly to our extremely low-income families, many of whom are service sector worker. A plan that includes affordability for all income group with special emphasis for the extremely low. A plan that has preservation for existing affordable housing. We need to preserve the existing affordable housing in the city of Cupertino. And also to create, um, opportunities for the unhoused by learning from other community effort, such as motel vouchers for the unhoused population, especially families with children and individuals with chronic health condition, uh, maybe a day shelter or a drop-in with navigation center, safe park, and RV parking. Um, I would, uh, hope that today the council will have a strong action item and put forward Cupertino in, in an inclusive community lens. Thank you.
Thank you, Sujata. Next, we have Peggy Griffin, followed by Ming Egan, followed by Sean Hughes. Welcome, Peggy.
Thank you. Um, could you put up my slides, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I, good evening, uh, City Council and, uh, staff. I want to thank Lou Conley for his immense work and help. Um, I'm asking you to preserve the existing retail centers. Do not add any more retail centers to our housing element site. exclude the retail centers below from AB 2011. Submit the exclusive paperwork, whatever that means. Um, why? As density increases, we want to avoid creating food deserts. We want to prevent any more retail leakage. We want to preserve what little existing diversified tax revenue we have and avoid requiring residents to leave Cupertino to get groceries and shop. It's a sustainability, climate action issue, and quality of life. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Okay. These are the list of the ones to preserve. There are 13, and there are two that we're losing as tier-one sites. Next slide, please. Pipeline project, Balco SB 35, keep all 2402 units. SB 35 project included both sides. A lot can happen in eight years. We've seen it. Look how fast the west side got cleaned up. Reducing the units by 900 to 1,000 units is 37.5% of the total square footage, which is arbitrary. The east side total residential square footage is 25% of the total square footage. So it's way more than what really you're eliminating. This is going to happen. It's eight years. Leave it. Consider adding sites, the tier-two sites that were vetted, also
Thank you, Peggy. That is your time. Next, we have Ming Egan, followed by Sean Hughes, followed by Sashi Bagor. Welcome, Ming.
Hello. Thank you. Uh, thank you, City Council and city staff for inviting us to speak. Um, I am a lifelong resident of Cupertino, Winter Egnart, Tandy, La Vista. Um, currently living in a home with, guy, a single-family home with, you know, my mom, my disabled auntie that I'm a caretaker of, my sister, and my partner. Um, and we are, you know, pretty cramped, living in a space like this, two people per bedroom. Um, and I would love to see more opportunities for affordable, very low affordable housing in the future. I'd love to see other forms of housing that is available beyond single-family homes and, you know, apartments as well, things like duplexes, fourplexes, townhomes. Um, I think those can be amazing places to live and can provide some flexibility for smaller lots. Um, and this is more personal experience, but also just what, it's a funny thing, watching just YouTube videos about urban sprawl online and then randomly seeing Cupertino get called out for our incredibly high parking minimums for residential units, uh, just out of nowhere. Um, and similarly believe that the, our, our high parking minimums have led to, you know, the development of a lot of urban sprawl, a lot of space between each other when density really is not that bad of a thing. Um, and can, in fact, as other speakers have talked about, have great environmental benefits, benefits to our, you know, commerce, neighborhoods, et cetera. Um, yeah, I just hope that you pursue this ambitiously. I also like the Cupertino for All policy recommendations, um, and would like to see this, more housing that is affordable and can provide space for multi-generational households like mine as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ming. Next, we have Sean Hughes, followed by Sashi Bagor, followed by Yukushima. Welcome, Sean.
Hello. As Neil mentioned, I would like to discuss some brief examples in Cupertino for All's recommendations, as guided by the three principles of production, preservation, for All's recommendations as guided by the three principles of production, preservation, and production. The production of home at all income levels, but in particular for community members of lower incomes, is crucial for giving all parts of our community the chance to call Cupertino home. These policies will range from technical, like restructuring impact fees or revising heart of the city standards in response to AB 2011, to practical, like measuring the amount of family-friendly housing built or partnering with local school districts to provide housing for teachers. Other policies may be more innovative, like following neighboring jurisdictions and rethinking the intentions and purposes of our parking minimum requirements. And some policies may be more traditional, like in response to Councilmember Moore's question on SB 9, code amendments to expand floor area ratios and permissible lot coverage in combination with an updated SB 9 ordinance to enable the creation of more starter homes rather than just larger houses. But more importantly, all of them aim to create an environment where all of our communities' housing needs can be met by allowing and encouraging all the kinds of homes necessary to meet those needs. CFA also focuses on the preservation of affordable housing opportunities and the protection of our ability to access those opportunities. Working with nonprofits, establishing a copa process, creating eviction housing supporting center, or establishing a rental registry will help renters, homeowners, and landlords alike with better protections, information, and transparency for all parties involved. These policies come together to build an ambitious housing element, an element that creates a better vision for Cupertino, a vision that is more sustainable, inclusive, and progressive than our home today. We hope that our city and community can come together to build and support a vision for this generation and many to come. Thank you.
Thank you Sean. Next we have Sashi Bagor followed by Yukushima followed by Jennifer Shirin. Welcome Sashi.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, hi. Hello Mayor, members of the city council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Sashi Bagor. I'm a 26-year resident of Cupertino. I also want to thank the staff for all the hard work they've done on this. I care deeply about the issues of affordable housing and the quality of life here in Cupertino. The housing element submitted by the previous council was well thought out and an intelligent plan that catered to all income level. I believe the city council must not waste any more time, accept the plan with explanations for the questions and comments requested by HCD without unnecessarily bringing in the builder's remedy, as Councilmember Frueen insisted would happen if he wasn't elected. Looks like it is his plan to make the builder's remedy happen. I hope I'm wrong. The current housing element plan developed by the previous council works because, one, we've met three of four, more importantly, the extremely low and low-income categories, helping DANSO students, teachers, new families, seniors, and low-wage workers, many of whom have shared their stories today. Two, the city has done its part for the sixth cycle. All possible sites have been identified, but the city does not control housing production. Many young people who spoke before me have asked you to increase housing production. The devil is in the detail. You can only approve. You cannot make the developers produce. Even if you added 10,000 more sites, there's no guarantee. Nobody can provide a guarantee that they will be built in eight years. We all deserve nice, sustainable public spaces where we can live in a vibrant community. We don't want to create a New York or San Francisco right here. Please accept all pipeline project. We cannot have SB 35 without all the units. HCD is asking for details. Provide them the details. Don't start from scratch. Thank you.
Thank you Sashi. Next we have Yukushima followed by Jennifer Shirin followed by Kamyaab Mashian. Welcome Yuko. And Yuko, we're not hearing you. I see you did unmute yourself, but we're not hearing you. Okay, appears you're having some audio issues, so perhaps you can try calling back or I will try, I'll call on you after a few speakers. And next we'll go to Jennifer Shirin. Welcome Jennifer.
Good evening Mayor Wei, Vice Mayor Mohan, and council members. My name is Jennifer Shirin and I'm a resident of Cupertino. I'm speaking on behalf of only myself tonight. I ask you tonight to support an aspirational housing element. We must move forward towards a compliant housing element which meets the needs of our community at all income levels and works in our city's best interests. We need to make sure that new homes get built and a good plan will do that. It should be built in places that allow new residents to walk and bike and take transit to local destinations. Pushing housing to corners of the city with little services in the name of balance, quote-unquote, may be politically expedient, but provides little value to potential residents, especially lower-income residents. A good plan also means not having our housing element rely on projects that are likely never to get built, such as the Hamptons on Wolf. We appear to have done that during the last cycle and the previous plan submitted this cycle. I heard Mr. Conley say in the staff presentation that the city can't control whether something gets built. We can, however, pick sites that are more likely rather than less likely to produce housing. We can also encourage development in places where transit and retail are already available and are attractive places for developers to build and for people to live. Adding ADUs is not going to get us to our arena targets. I also heard tonight from several speakers from Cupertino for All. I have read their list of policy and program recommendations. I encourage you to use those as your guidelines. They have spent an exhaustive amount of time researching and considering this issue carefully. Implementing those recommendations will make Cupertino's revamped housing element not only an excellent plan, but most importantly, a compliant plan. Thank you for considering my input tonight and your work on behalf of Cupertino.
Thank you Jennifer. Next we have Kamyaab Mashian. Welcome Kamyaab.
Good evening, council and staff. My name is Kamyaab Mashian and I would like to speak tonight in support of an ambitious housing element in compliance with state law. I think the policy and programs proposed by Cupertino for All are the right path to meeting this goal. Please take this opportunity to get the housing element right so we can begin to tackle the housing crisis in the coming decade. I also wanted to briefly address some of the concerns that council members and members of the public have touched on in regard to the loss of retail space. While it would be good to take a case-by-case approach to seeing whether some retail sites can be preserved in exchange for denser housing elsewhere, fundamentally, the reason retail is struggling is because we have not built a community that can sustain the retail that it once could. Without adding more housing and bringing in new residents, we will continue to bleed retail locations, just as we have lost school enrollment and have driven out essential workers. These issues are linked. If I may speak on the other agenda item as well, I would also strongly urge the council not to oppose SB 423. It would not reflect well-
Excuse me. Actually Kamyaab, you can speak on that other item too. There will be another public comment period for that item.
Oh, I do appreciate that. Thanks for clarifying. In any case, that is all the comments that I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you Kamyaab. Next I will try Yukushima one more time. Yuko, I will allow you to speak. Please unmute yourself. There I saw you unmuted yourself. You should be able to comment now. Okay, unfortunately it appears that you're having some audio issues, so I will move on to Dan Marshall followed by Gori Chala followed by Shivani Cavuluru. Welcome Dan.
Good evening, members of the city council and staff. Thank you so much for your service and this opportunity to contribute. I have lived in Cupertino for 35 years and I fully embrace the migration that we're going through. My primary point is with regard to ADUs, auxiliary dwelling units. I believe that they are really a win-win opportunity in that the homeowners' home value will go up and we will achieve a diversified climate in each neighborhood. We won't have rich people in one neighborhood and poor people in another one. So they really seem like win-win. What's needed is a streamlined process for permitting, installing, and setting up the infrastructure, such as the power and the sewage and then in the last phase, the construction. I think that we should have a city employee devoted to greasing the skids to build ADUs throughout the city. My second point, I see I have a few moments remaining, is that if we're building tall buildings, I think we should make them very tall so that we don't have to make them again. So I'd go for six stories or more. Thank you very much for your attention and time.
Thank you Dan. Next we have Gori Chala followed by Shivani Cavuluru followed by Will, who will be our final speaker, who had their hand raised within the nine minutes that the mayor opened the public comment period. Welcome Gori.
Good evening, council and staff. My name is Gori and I would like to commend staff for their work on their presentation tonight. I would like to support an ambitious housing element that is also compliant with state policies. As we have seen in the feedback letter, the current draft that we have is not compliant, so I would urge Cupertino to create a housing element that is ambitious and also creates opportunities for those who are low-income and unhoused. Low-income housing is really important in Cupertino, not only to drive up enrollment and residence opportunity, but also to support residents who are currently living in Cupertino and who need access to affordable housing. It is also important that we support our unhoused population either through transitional housing or some of the other methods that West Valley Community Services mentioned today. I think that it is very important that Cupertino takes this issue seriously and works to create not only a compliant housing element, but a housing element that will actually strive to make better policy decisions for Cupertino residents. Thank you.
Thank you Gori. Next we have Shivani Cavuluru followed by Will. Welcome Shivani.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Good evening, respected staff, council, and my community. I support and need this council to support an ambitious and compliant and inclusive housing element for Cupertino as outlined by Cupertino for All's policy recommendation. Every time we talk about Cupertino's future housing projects, conversations get heated. We can all agree, however, that we want the best for Cupertino. You heard tonight that only four cities were compliant and on the right path with their housing element. It should bother you that our city, Cupertino, is not one of these four. It should bother you, Cupertino, our city, a trailblazer in so many innovations, is failing its community by falling so far behind. It should not only bother you, but now compel you to act on the immense amount of consistent feedback you've been getting from us, your community, to support an ambitious housing element. I didn't spend my childhood playing volleyball by the Cupertino library or go trick-or-treating by the haunted house on Blaney, or spend my Friday recesses at Collins Elementary believing the words of my Cupertino teachers that I can inspire positive change and help create a Cupertino that is a safer, more inclusive, and affordable place, just to watch our city leaders dancing with stagnation and falling behind and consistently moving goalposts despite having adequate feedback to follow through on an ambitious housing element. Your community, staff, future children, and frankly, all the trailblazers that are looking to Cupertino to lead are counting on you to unambiguously support an ambitious housing element. I cannot stress this enough. It is truly now or never. For a city that boasts looking into the future in every other aspect, I urge you to use your power and not let Cupertino get left behind. Thank you for your time.
Thank you Shivani. Next we have Will. Welcome Will.
Hey, first of all, is this on?
Yes, it is.
Okay, good. First of all, thank you for having this discussion. I know you heard it a million times, compliant, ambitious housing element, yada, yada, yada. I assume you're all familiar with that. I just wanted to also just emphasize what everyone else is saying. This is the very concerning situation that this whole place is getting expensive and especially extremely unlivable for young people who, many I know have no choice but to move out because it's just not worth sticking around. Obviously, I cannot emphasize enough on affordable housing. I know everyone else has already said it, so I don't want to repeat what's already been said over and over again. Just, I just want to say the fact that this issue absolutely cannot be ignored and the fact that our leadership has failed to provide adequate solution in the past is extremely worrying. Last time we tried them, we trusted them, they failed to come up with a solution for Valco and we cannot afford a lot of time to be wasted again. So there's that. And last but not least, as someone who has grown up here for almost my entire life, we voted you because we wanted to see our city improve and we cannot see our leadership fail again. Thank you very much.
Thank you Will. And Mayor, that's our final speaker, and I just want to remind people that their comments can be included in the public record if they email citycouncil@cupidino.org.
Okay. Thank you Madam City Clerk. Really appreciate your support all the time. And I want to thank all the public who made comments. Every comment is important to us. I am going to end the public comment period and bring the discussion back to council. In order for the council to have a meaningful discussion, I would love to entertain a motion and a second to start a discussion. Does any one of our colleagues have a motion to make so that we can start a meaningful discussion? Seeing no lights on.
I can provide you with one if you like.
Oh, Councilmember Frueen, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. It's long enough that I'll send it to the clerk. That way we can throw it up on the screen and move on from there.
Okay, so Madam City Clerk, when you receive it, please show it to us. A question, point of order. So this is a study session, right? Doing, is a motion required?
Motion is not required, but it's permitted.
So usually we just provide comments and staff jot down the direction. So...
Councilmember Frueen has the privilege of making a motion.
Okay.
And Suda Mayor, if I may. Councilmember Chow, you're absolutely right. And a city attorney pointed out, motion's not required, but it will help staff to consolidate your feedback and know the direction collectively from council so that we can provide that back to the consultant, finalizing our draft and resubmit to HCD.
Do we have, have you received it?
I just received it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You should see it on the screen now.
Councilmember Frueen, since you're the one who's making the motion, would you like to read it and expand a little bit?
Sure. So in addition to collecting council input in open session, something that I'm sure we will offer all right now, that staff be directed to undertake each of the following in the preparation of Cupertino's next draft submission of the housing element revision to the California Department of Housing and Community Development. First, with respect to the site inventory, that staff revise the draft site inventory to, A, include all tier one and tier two sites and revise their proposed densities in response to outreach to property owners as appropriate. B, include appropriate heart of the city parcels eligible for housing development under AB 2011, and consider densities and heights above the AB 2011 baseline in order to maintain other development standards and place-making opportunities. C, modify the number of expected homes from pipeline projects in accordance with HCD feedback and consultant advice. Second, with respect to public participation and development of the six required areas of policies and programs that staff, A, collect all input from letters and comments submitted for today's meeting, especially the calls for an "ambitious housing element" and "examined the suggested policies, programs, and concerns for analysis and potential inclusion in the revised draft." And B, prioritize policy and program focus on the following: I, reducing constraints to housing development; II, facilitating missing-middle housing to affirmatively further fair housing; III, assisting the lowest-income households through targeted policies and the development of ELI, emergency interim, and permanent supportive housing.
Okay. Do I have a second so I can open for discussions? I'll second it so we can open for discussions. So council discussions, please. Do we have lights? If not, I'd like to ask the first couple of questions of Councilmember Frueen. So the two proposals you make, one is specific to the site inventory. The other is for the- development of the requirement areas of policies or programs. I, you know, on all the comments, one of them really stick to me is housing for DANSA students. Are any of these, you know, proposed consideration for staff could produce housing for DANSA students specifically?
So by way of response, there's a couple of things. One, the six required areas for policy and analysis overlap to a significant degree. Within this framework of focus and prioritization, I would say that facilitating missing-middle housing in particular speaks to that, as would the very last point, assisting lowest-income housing households.
See, that's what I'm looking at. If I were to make a friendly amendment, I would add assisting the lowest-income household through targeted policies, the development of ELI, emergency interim, and permanent supportive housing, and housing for DANSA students.
I'd be happy to accept the friendly amendment. What I would simply point out is it is amply covered in a number of the comments and letters that we received today, but if you want to make it a specific focus, I am happy to accept that amendment.
I'd like to do that.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. And since I'm the second one, I, because, okay, that's just a discussion. So any other council members for open discussions, your concerns, your additions, deductions, and friendly amendments? Councilmember Chow?
So if we include all Tier 1 and Tier 2 sites and plus, plus the AB 2011 sites, what's the total number of units? Do you have any estimation?
That would be a good question for staff. I would remind you that with respect to AB 2011, these will all wind up being eligible anyway, so this is a question of whether we want to help guide this development or not.
So I have a question for staff. The, any site that's either zoned for housing or qualified under 2011, if they are not identified the housing element site, what's the difference if they are added to housing element or not?
Were you specifically asked about the AB 2011 sites, whether they were added or not?
I think both, whether, if it's not 2011 site, whether they are added or not. I think currently, I remember all of Stevens Creek, both sites are zoned for residential. That's already, anyone can develop. Like, we actually had, I think, three projects that are not on housing element in current cycle, and we approved them because they are zoned for housing, and we approved them. So for a site that's not 2011, what's the difference whether we add them or not add them? Because they can develop anyway. And then for 2011 site, what's the difference if we add them or not add them to the housing element?
I think by adding them to the housing element, and we touched on this a little bit earlier, is they would be treated then and designated as a housing element site, which I think takes away any doubt about what the city's intent of is for their development. They would also be analyzed in the environmental impact report as a housing site, which, under AB 2011, they would not be if they were not designating a housing site. They could still develop as housing, but it would be more independently of the housing element process.
I guess my question is more in terms of the city code, the regulation, state law, any advantage is there for an applicant if the site is identified as housing element site?
Yeah, I think the primary advantage is they are designated that and would be reflected in the housing element, and they would have an environmental impact report that would have already assumed residential development at a certain density on that property, which would streamline a housing project.
So they would not, but then, for example, the Betap Brothers site and then the Canyon Bridge site, they were not housing element site, and they did not need an EIR because they were evaluated, I think, under the general plan. So...
Yeah, and I believe those were also much smaller projects, too, that might not have warranted an environmental impact report just because of their size.
So if it were a housing element site, any of the Tier 2 site, if it's a smaller, it really doesn't matter if it's added or not?
Through the chair, if I may. If we can, I mean, I think this is, again, some of the theoretical or hypothetical questions. So CEQA and entitlement, they're two different processes. Some of the developments, regardless if they're in housing element, they may or may not be subject to CEQA. So I don't know if you're trying to ask whether or not CEQA is going to apply to certain projects, or how is that going to affect the housing?
I'm trying to assess this current motion because the allocation we need to meet is about 5,000 units.
Through the mayor?
The current motion...
I just, if we could stop Councilmember Chow's time, I just would want to remind everybody, all the council members, that this is their opportunity to state whether they support the current motion or whether they'd make a different motion. I mean, they have had time for questions earlier, and they, so, I mean, I think the mayor could allow council members to use their time to ask more questions, but they might not be able to state their views on the current motion or make other motions.
So...
I just want to preserve your time for comments.
This is on the current motion, so I'm trying to understand, the current motion, likely, the number of units might be not 5,000, maybe 10,000. I don't know if we're adding Tier 1, Tier 2, plus 2011 sites, so that, under this "ambitious" housing plan, so I'm just trying to understand, what's the difference if we have identified 5,000 versus 10,000? It seems, it's just a label. It doesn't really make a real difference for most of the smaller development.
If I, through the chair, Mayor, if I can, I think this is really a response that you need to take a couple steps back. Earlier during Luke's presentation, there was an emphasis that HCD's comment mentioned that we heavily relied on pipeline projects. So we need to reduce that number, and how do we make up, offset that number? And knowing that AB 2011 is going to produce some numbers, so we're trying to use our best judgment through staff and also through the consultant to come to that Rena buffer. We're not going to go over. We're going to come to that number.
But the current motion is proposing to go over.
It says when appropriate.
Could you clarify, the motion maker, are we still, would be like 25% of the allocation? Is that still what you have in mind?
Through the mayor. I believe that Councilmember Chow's time has expired.
I'm going to let Councilmember Fruin explain his motion.
I'll briefly respond. The purpose of the expression "as appropriate" is there to imbue staff with the ability and discretion to make good choices. I asked a number of questions earlier when we were on the topic of AB 2011 as to whether, for example, they would look to include a site that was up to 20 acres, because AB 2011 can affect a site that is up to 20 acres, and they gave a response that I thought was reasonable. I would like to be able to give them that discretion so that they can work with the consultant and be able to come up with something that is coherent and that is likely to pass muster. We can reexamine that when we get comments back from HCD again.
Do we have other council members who have comments on the motion? I think I make some comments, but I have one more, but go ahead, Councilmember Moore? Oh, or Vice Mayor Mohan? Vice Mayor Mohan, go ahead.
I'm looking at this, the motion, Councilmember Fruin, and staff as well. My question is, it's fairly broad, and did you, how do we get to the details, or do we not get to the details?
So I tried to cover that at the very beginning, which is that in addition to collecting council input in open session, meaning you can make all the comments you like as to which policies you prefer, what you'd like to see, what you perhaps saw in anybody else's advocacy letter that you really wanted to see included, so that staff can take that on board. I'm trying to embrace what everyone else has to offer here, but I'm also trying to ensure that there is some sort of direction that's coherent.
Okay, so what would be the process for that if, for example, I wanted to add three more things?
I think you could, you could tell us what you'd really like to see.
In a later process?
No, you can tell us now?
I see, okay. Okay, I'll wait to make other comments.
Councilmember, Vice Mayor Mohan, you didn't finish, right?
No, I said I'm going to pause for now.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Moore, your turn, please.
Thank you. So there are, there appears to be reference to the Cupertino For All letter that was set in, and we don't have a copy of this up for members of the public to see, and it sounds like this motion is trying to pass all of the items. It's a, there's a 20-page letter. It sounds like you're trying to pass all of those items without having an analysis or a listing for that. So I would prefer, because we're talking about policies, that we would actually see all of these policies that are being proposed brought up. You know, do we, are you looking at rent control? Are you looking at vacancy tax? Are you looking at removing impact fees for parkland? And there, so we should be looking at all of these as a list to see what is actually being proposed before we, it just seems like pass it and find out what's in it, and I think that that's fraught with some potential issues where we're sending staff off with an unknown list to go work with that we haven't spoken about. So anyway, I would like to have us go through, go through the list. It's going to take more time, but this was kind of, this is a lengthy motion, which has embedded within it another document that we need to talk about. So I can't support this motion. I don't know what's in it.
Councilmember Fruin, you have an answer for that?
By way of very simple answer, the CFA letter appears to have been submitted yesterday. It appears in written communications for our use as of last night, so that information has been there. It's been available for the public to examine for at least 24 hours at this point, and I know that staff is certainly aware of it. You can confirm that you received the letter?
Yes, we've received it.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Fruin. I do have a question on the process. We are here to discuss what we want to hire, the directions to the staff to work on the housing element. And Councilmember Fruin's motion to me can be added, it can be friendly amendment, can really work through this, and if council members want to add specific directions, like what I just did, added housing for DANSA students, I think we are at the liberty of doing that, so that, so that's my understanding.
Through the mayor? So I think that's largely accurate. I am, I would prefer, in having conversed with staff in advance, to try to keep this on the level of priorities so that there is direction that is clear but not so intrusive that we are telling them, oh, you must produce only this. I have seen that produce bad results in San Jose, where very specific policies were prescribed by one council, reversed by another, and then the city was left without an entire policy prescription for an entire required area. That's not, I think, where we want to be, so I want to give staff the flexibility to be able to look at a variety of policy prescriptions. Some of them will get included, some of them won't. That's really up to them to recommend to us and to supply to HCD as, as we fit. But if there's something you really want to flag that is important to you, then now's a good time.
Thank you, Councilmember Fruin. Do we have more comments from the council? Council, Vice Mayor Mohan, please.
I think I had a minute or so. No, actually, you have three minutes. So my question was, and Councilmember Fruin, you could help me on this. Councilmember Moore listed a whole bunch of specific items, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'm using that as an example of items less general than the motion we're considering now. If we went, and this is just hypothetical, if we went with all the items that Councilmember Moore, for example, mentioned, are these things that you could fit into the categories that HCD has made comments on in their response? Does that make sense?
I almost think that's a better question for staff.
As opposed to, oh, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, again, the purpose of the motion is to both collect your feedback, so if there are things you want to add, that's embraced in the motion, and if there's something very specific that you would like to signal that we add to the motion text itself that is very, very important to you, then we can consider that through the usual amendment process.
Oh, sorry. If I could, my preference is to leave it as general, but with the understanding that it would be inclusive of all the specific concerns we had, the parking restrictions, or the teacher housing, or the student housing. Can it be fitted into these categories that are in the motion right now?
If I could try, I know there's a number of things mentioned, but in terms of could they fit into the required categories of the housing element, I think the majority of them could. Offhand, I couldn't say going through every one of them, but the majority of these could be. I think what we were looking for tonight was sort of the support from the council on particular items, so a lot of these are things you would typically see in housing elements. There was nothing there that I haven't seen in some other cities' housing element. I think the document even references what other cities have done. So these could certainly fit within those broad categories, the six items that we covered, but I'm not sure the total number, to get into all of those right now. You know, I guess if there were particular areas, again, if you're going to, if you want to make a more focused motion, then what I think we have on the table, maybe some of those could be called out as particularly of concern for the Cupertino community or for the city council. But I think, you know, the category of programs and policies is very broad by its very nature. And again, all of these areas, the six areas we cited, they do need to be addressed in some capacity. You could have policies and programs even outside of those areas if you so wanted. So again, there's a lot in that document. I think, the way I see the motion as written, is it is broad and giving a lot of flexibility, so it would be a matter of how specific you wanted to make it.
Are you talking about the motion, or are you talking about the...
The policies.
So I apologize, I think your five minutes is up. So, so far, Councilmember Moore, Councilmember Chow and Moore have, Vice Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Mohan and Councilmember Chow has used up her time, but Councilmember Moore, you have three minutes, and Councilmember Fruin, you have three minutes, I have a couple of minutes. Do you want to finish this round of a question or discussion? So if not, I want to use my couple of minutes to ask this question. I think, if I understand, Councilmember Chow's concern is, with this very broad instruction for staff to do with Tier 1, Tier 2, plus all the eligible 2011 sites, would you be coming up with a housing element that's 10,000 instead of, you know, the 45, 88, plus the 20, 25% needed? I think the concern is, would that be too, are we going to assign too many housing in Cupertino? Is that one of your concerns?
Yeah, I wasn't sure what's the intent.
That's why I'm asking that question.
No, I don't, that's not the intent. I think when we submitted the housing element on sites, the goal was to have those stand, but knowing that some sites have come into question, the goal is to offset that. It's not to create or, you know, double the Rena, for instance, while I said, we're going to have an alternative in the EIR that's going to look at AB 2011 as a whole. So that would... as a whole, so that would have far more capacity than our RENA target, but I think the target hasn't moved. It's to hit our RENA and then to have a buffer of something in the 25 to 30% range.
Great. I have a friendly amendment, so do I do that after? Okay.
I'm going to let the discussion finish first. Councilmember Moore, you have three minutes.
Do you want more discussions? If not, we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Fruin, you do have three minutes.
Yeah, I was just, again, to reiterate for everyone, if there are things you'd like to see in it, you know, this is the time to speak up, because the idea behind the motion is to allow you to note what those things are. So for example, under the section, the priority of facilitating missing middle housing to affirmatively further fair housing, this speaks very specifically to those housing projects that are smaller. These are duplexes, there are triplexes, there are quads. There are things that are affected by, you know, very specific development standards in our zoning code that are mentioned, for example, in the CFA letter, that were the discussion up here as well. I think that that's a very important fact, considering even the R1 zoning standards, considering the likely passage of SB 450, which would nullify our SB 9 implementation ordinance. If that's the case, and that's a means for us to produce housing that is more naturally affordable because of the size that it is, then I think that we should be taking advantage of those sorts of opportunities. So I'd signal that right now as something that sits inside of that, that piece. I would also emphasize some of the things that were commented with regard to teacher housing, if there is a way for us to focus on that, I think that I would like to see that. I think that that's probably something that you'll get consensus from a lot of us up here on. Those are the major things that I'd really like to see, and then I'd also comment with respect to the density bonus law. I don't want to see us completely give up on that in terms of being able to perhaps incentivize alternatives for developers to take advantage of, whether that means that we give relief on some other topic. Instead, usage of the density bonus law, to me, is a symptom. That symptom is that we have too restrictive of zoning standards, and the reason that it's being exercised is in order to get away from those things. So if we want to be able to enforce them, I think we need to give developers a different incentive to follow them. That is most of what I've got, I will reserve the rest of my time.
Thank you, you only have three seconds left.
So I am going to, we have a motion and a second, so if we have...
Can I make a friendly amendment?
Please.
Okay. So can I add a friendly amendment that the staff will concede, take into consideration of all the public comments received so far per state law when revising the policy based on this motion?
I believe that's actually already embraced in the motion.
Can we see the motion again?
Can you email the motion to us? Because I screenshotted it, but it's so tiny, I can't really read.
Through the mayor.
Yes, please.
I will reread that section. Collect all input from letters and comments submitted for today's meeting, especially the calls for an ambitious housing element, and examine the suggested policies, programs, and concerns for analysis and potential inclusion in the revised draft. That gives staff a great deal of latitude.
That's not what I meant. I meant, the state law required the city to do public outreach, which started last year, so could we follow the state law? And the staff will consider all these comments received so far when considering, not just today's comments.
Councilmember Chow, do you want to write up your friendly amendment?
Mayor, if I may, if the amendment's sufficiently clear, I think the question is whether councilmember Fruin accepts the amendment.
Okay.
By way of direction to staff, I assume that you will do this anyway, because it is required by state law.
Yeah, if the question is, are we taking into account all of the public outreach and comments received, that we're obligated to do that.
Okay.
Good, thank you for clarifying that.
In that case, then I will be happy to accept the amendment, because it is already required.
Thank you. And another friendly amendment is...
I really need that friendly amendment to be right, to be precisely written down.
So mayor, since I believe you were the seconder of the motion, do you accept, do you also accept the friendly amendment?
I actually don't, because I'm a little confused, that amendment is very long and is not... So why don't we do this? Since you have another friendly amendment, why don't we take a five-minute recess? You write down your friendly amendment, both of them, and then we can come back reexamining it. How's that? Okay, let's take a five-minute break, so you can write down exactly what you think, because I need to exactly see what it is.
Mayor, I can share my screen, I have, I did.
I'm sorry?
Oh, you have it written down.
I'll let councilmember Chow draft how she would like.
You already have something.
Okay, you want to read it back to us, Kirsten?
I'll just share it.
Okay.
So it's right here, Chow made a friendly amendment to, that staff will take into consideration of all public comments per state law when revising the policy based on this motion. So we have all public comments heard.
Wait, what did you say?
Chow made a friendly amendment to the staff.
To staff, that they will take into consideration all public comments, I assume, heard tonight.
No, not tonight.
Oh, okay.
Per state law is all public comments received in the process, entire process of housing element.
Okay, perhaps I should just let you draft it then.
Okay. Take a five-minute break, so you can draft, because you said you have a second friendly amendment. Can you draft both at the same time?
To prioritize development.
Can you draft at the same time?
Housing for development.
Five minutes break, thank you.